Okay, this is the city of Boulder Planning Board meeting of August two twenty twenty-two. It's six o'clock and I see that we have a full attendance from our colleagues on the planning board. So I'll declare the meeting in progress and we'll start out with Amanda. Letting everyone know how we intend to run this meeting.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate all your patience as I navigate Zoom this evening. I'm gonna share my screen here. Are you all seeing the screen?
Yes.
Okay, oops. Try again. It's just being a little bit slow. Sorry about that. All right, welcome everybody to the planning board meeting. We're glad you're all here. And we are aiming to keep these meetings respectful and orderly. As such, we have some specific protocol for the meeting. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and board and commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, you can visit our website. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revise Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Absinthe, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to identify themselves using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. And if you are, would, if you do decide to speak this evening, you can hover over, hover your mouse or finger over the bottom section of your screen or your phone for the control panel to show the raise hand function. Looks like this right down here. If you are on the phone this evening, you can dial star nine and we can enable you to speak. When it's that time for the meeting, let me show you just one more screen here. Here's the raise hand function. Great, and I'll stop sharing and turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll move ahead. Just noting that we're all here tonight. The first order of business is after the call to order is public participation. And so this is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the planning board on any issue except those on which there are public hearing items that we're addressing tonight. And those public hearing items are the request to extend approval of site review application number L U R two zero one seven dash zero 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 eight one. And a public hearing and recommendation regarding the comprehensive flood and stormwater master plan for Boulder. So if you have any other, if you want to talk on any other topic than those two, now is the time for you to address us. And Amanda, I'm hoping you'll help to see if anyone wants to talk to us tonight.
Looking for any raised hands if you'd like to speak now. And I will allow, I will call on you when it's your turn.
Okay, well. I don't, oh, there's a raised hand. Okay, Amanda, you want to run this? Okay.
Yes, Lynn Segal, I will unmute you and let you have the floor. One moment.
And Amanda, are you running the timer also?
I am, and I will get that started here.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead Lynn, you should be able to speak.
Um, I can't, oh yeah, okay. Okay, front page of the camera today. This is unacceptable. Okay, you know the gun barrel situation? I swear to God, over my dead body, this is gonna come back for review. These prairie dogs, a hundred and forty of them already on Rocky Flats. Do you know my mother died for Rocky Flats? Nineteen fifty-seven fire, plutonium. And you're allowing prairie dogs to dig in that central processing unit and all that wildlife preserve? And and dig up that stuff and have it, the wind come all over, you know, I don't have to swear, do I? I don't have to swear. This is worse than swearing. This is horrific that this is allowed, that this lottery system, what the heck is this lottery system? For the prairie dogs to go to Rocky Flats? No way, over my friggin' dead body. Over my dead body. A hundred and seventy-five more prairie dogs going there now? You wait and see what it feels like to have lose your mother when you're sixteen years old, your brother's fifteen, and your other brother's five. See what that feels like? Say what that feels like? How could you have a system like this? How could you possibly allow prairie dogs on a super fun site? With the infinity rooms? Good God, I followed this for thirty years. No way, no way. Now, let's get to the next subject. The CU shindig to promote CU South. No way, no way. I just drove back from the airport, my daughter-in-law came into town. The hotels, two hours to get back from the friggin' airport. I haven't driven in six months because wherever you are, there you'll be, and I'm here in Boulder. I'm trying to be here in Boulder. You know, one of my comparables for my property tax was up the street. Five point eight five million dollars. Six million dollars for my, what was my comp? That's what you're doing at the planning board. You are driving up the cost prohibitively for people to live here. Two hotels cross the street from each other. The Millennium, three hundred students at two hundred and fifty, whatever it is, from CU. This is outrageous. Stop already. The landmarks board, I met a family this last week at thirty-one twenty-two Eighth Street, an old historic place. We're gonna have to demo that. Because nobody can afford to not to save our history in town. In fact, the landmark board offered them to have a structural engineer reevaluate the situation, and then they turned around and took it back. Because they can't afford it. Make the developers pay. Hear me? Done.
Thank you, Lynn. Do we have any other speakers tonight?
I don't see any other raised hands.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to make a note with respect to Lynn's first topic that she was speaking about. The prairie dogs being relocated to Rocky Flats. I saw that in the paper also and was somewhat surprised by it. So I think we'll ask for a, an update by staff in our next meetings about what open space and the city is doing in that respect. Because I'm also concerned about prairie dogs at Rocky Flats. So we can move on now to a discussion of dispositions and call-ups. We have two items tonight that we're asked to consider. One is replant of the existing tracks intended to serve the new fire station on thirtieth street. Case number L U R twenty twenty-one dash zero 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 one seven. Does anybody have questions or want to call that matter up? Seeing none. We'll move ahead to the second one, which is a plat to subdivide the property at forty-five forty Broadway to create a single lot suitable for development of the North Boulder Branch Library. This, this is a subdivision final plat case number T E C twenty twenty dash zero 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 one. Does anybody have questions or want to call that one up? I have a question. Oh, Mark, go ahead. Go ahead.
Just as a somewhat newbie. The, this, this particular item that we could call up is strictly for the plat. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna phrase this as a question. Is this strictly for the plat and that at a subsequent date? When the, why we would have a concept review and or a site review potentially at a later date? This does not preclude use review, site review, other input the planning board may have in the future. This is strictly a land plating division formality. Is that correct?
So that is correct. However, the plat is implementing a site and use review that was already approved by planning board in twenty twenty. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, I also have a question, and that pertains to whether this has any relevance to the upcoming election on establishing a library district and whether this action that we're dealing with tonight will in any way be affected by the outcome of that that election.
I'm gonna try to answer that question for you, John. So if the ballot measure passes to form and fund the district, then I think your next question is what happens to the night, the library at that point in time that's being constructed up there? Ultimately, if, if this ballot item is successful, it's anticipated that the North Boulder Library would either be conveyed to the district or would be leased to the district. What exactly would happen is not clear at this point in time. But if there was a conveyance, there would most likely be another plating in order to retain some of those, the, the creek area and the multi-use path for that to be owned and maintained by the city and only the building and parking associated therewith and open space that's associated with the library to go to the district. So those details will still have to be worked out, but for now, the library is slated to go forward as planned and and then the ownership might change or the operation might change if this ballot passes.
But just to clarify, what we're dealing with tonight doesn't change the ownership of this property. It's owned by the city now, and it will be owned by the city after this moves ahead until some decision is made in the future. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you. All right. I, I don't see a need to call this up. Does anybody else? Okay, so we are not calling this one up. And we'll move ahead to our public hearing items. The first one is a, a public hearing on a request to extend the approval of site review application number L U R two zero one seven dash zero 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 eight one for redevelopment of a site at fifty-five oh five Central Avenue. This permit was issued in twenty twenty-one. Or, or at least quite several years ago with the construction supposed to begin in a long time ago, but it hasn't. And so they're requesting an extension of their permit. And we'll ask staff to take it from here.
Great, thanks so much, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. Elaine McLaughlin, principal planner, is gonna present status analysis.
Great, thanks, Charles.
Lynn, my apologies for interrupting. I just wanted to remind the board if there are any disclosures you have to make, then this would be the right time for that.
Okay, I, I have a disclosure if nobody else does, and that is that I met and had lunch with the, both the former owner and the new owner of this plot about three weeks ago. But we didn't talk, say anything about this application or this building. And I don't think that we talked about anything that would diminish my ability to evaluate this fairly and objectively. Okay. Nobody else has anything, so go ahead.
Great, all right. Thanks very much and good evening, everyone. I'll share my screen and please just confirm that we've got it up and running. Once I'm there. Everybody see that screen?
Okay, we're there, yes.
Excellent. All right, so before you this evening, our request, it is a request for a development review extension. It's the approval for a site review on several different sites and it's planning board level review. We've seen these types of requests from time to time, and especially so over the past couple of years with the COVID pandemic that created some timing issues for completed projects and or rather completing projects. So we'll get into some details of this request in the slides that follow. But just to place ourselves in the context, the site's located in East Boulder. As you can see, it's near the intersection of Central Avenue and Fifty-Fifth Street in the Flatiron Industrial Business Park. So the project was approved that included improvements to connectivity on three adjacent properties to fifty-five oh five Central, and those are properties that are commonly owned. You can see it outlined in the dash black line, and that included as well the addition of bicycle parking, keeping with adopted standards. There's adjustments to parking layout to make it a little bit more pedestrian friendly. Some improvements to walkways, drainage, water quality improvements, along with some comprehensive improvements to landscaping and lighting. And then in addition, the applicant was approved to build an approximately fifty-three thousand, six hundred square foot two-and-a-half-story office building, and there were no modifications to the land use code approved, such as setbacks or height that planning board would normally see. So the process to date on this site's been fairly extensive, and that includes a concept plan review in twenty seventeen. That was reviewed by the planning board but was not called up by city council. There was a site review approved by the planning department, and that was not called up by the planning board in August of twenty eighteen. Then in addressing the conditions of approval that were part of that development agreement, the applicant applied for and received review and approval on technical documents along with administrative review of an easement vacation in which a deed of vacation was approved, tech doc application was submitted for easement dedications for utility drainage and access easements also reviewed and approved. And then in twenty twenty-two, the building permits were issued and earlier this year, right-of-way permit applications were submitted, reviewed and approved, and construction staging was initiated along with some utility permit applications that are currently under review. There's two level, staff level extensions that were granted previously, the first about a year ago, and then the second in February this year. The code allows for two six-month extensions. And so that brings us to where we are tonight, which is to request that planning board provide an extension to finalize the construction process. So then, under the three-year rule in the land use code, a development approvals provided for three years to begin and substantially complete a project. And then there's also this extension criteria that, as I noted, allows two staff level extensions of six months each, and then the planning board level extension. So there's just three review criteria to approve an extension, and essentially it's that an applicant demonstrates reasonable diligence and that there's a good cause for construction, that there may be additional conditions imposed if there's been any relevant amendments to Title Nine since the approval. So it's important to note that the code is silent about the timeframe for extension. Staff generally in the past interpreted it to be the three-year rule to apply to extensions, although it depends on probably the level of finalization that's necessary. In this case, they would probably need the three-year extension to complete the construction. The start of the extension would be from the date that the decision is made essentially this evening. And it's important to note that the applicant must abide by original conditions that's set forth in the disposition of approval. So then for reasonable diligence, there needs to be evidence that the applicant's done work toward completing the project. That includes things like drafting plans for permit or other technical documents or other permits. And then so as you can see on the right, and as we talked a little bit about, there's been quite a bit of plans and some middles provided that have gone through review and have been approved. And so then also as noted, the criteria for review is to demonstrate good cause. And in that case, it includes things such as economic cycles or market conditions that prevented construction of the project during the original approval period. And so in that regard, of course, because the timing to implement the construction of the project was literally at the start of twenty twenty, and we all know that the global pandemic created material and supply change, chain shortages that were not only local but global in scope. The applicant indicated that they were also caught up in that, and so in addition, the applicant also indicated that in the downtime, it allowed them to work on strategies. They can talk a little bit about this, about repricing, awarding subcontractors, working with Excel on their easements. So it is evident that the applicants demonstrated good cause in this case. And then it's also important to note that there was a change in ownership. My understanding is the new owners are available to answer any questions this evening. And then for the third and final criteria, additional conditions can be imposed by the board. If it is a result of changes to Title Nine after the date of the original approval, and so in that regard, it's important to note that no site review criteria that's relevant to this proposal was added or changed. In this case, because they're within the height limit, those community benefit standards related to height wouldn't come into play. We've also talked about the fact that it's part of the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, so flatter and business parks within that sub-community plan. However, it's important to note that any type of adoption or amendment of a sub-community plan or master plan is not an amendment of Title Nine, and they're not part of Title Nine. So because that particular sub-community plan has not yet been fully adopted, things like the sub-community plans and policy documents aren't relevant to extending any type of conditions. And then with regard to this particular criteria, staff finds it's, the project remains consistent with the site review criteria. And we are not recommending any additional conditions of approval for the project. So with that, there's a motion that's available in your packet and also provided herein for your reference and staff's available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions of staff from the board? Sarah?
I'm just, I wanna, can they, assuming they don't, just as a thought, thought experiment, if they don't make a bit, make progress in the next three years, if that's what we approve, can they come back for another extension?
I'll defer to city attorney's office for that one.
Yes, I think they could come back for another extension. They would again be able to, they would again have to meet those review criteria that apply and, and show that there is good cause to give another extension.
George?
Oh, I, you know, the, the change of ownership was brought up. I, I was just curious if you could give us a little more color on the circumstance of the change of ownership. What, what the property, I, I just wanna understand who owned the property prior, who owns the property now? What, what was that transaction about?
So that's actually a great question for the applicant team, and I, as I understand it, representative property ownership's available for that.
Okay, we'll invite the applicant to, to respond to that when we're done with our questions here. Was there anything else, George?
Uh, no, that's, thank you.
Okay, Mark?
Well, I, I'm gonna beg the indulgence of my fellow board members and, and staff and the applicants. I do have some questions. And I want to acknowledge that my questions are not going to change the facts on the ground of, of planning board's very limited role in granting this, this extension, but I, but, you know, careful reading of the packet raises some questions. One of the changes noted by the applicant is lead certification. To what level of lead certification will this building achieve?
And so again, that's a great question for the applicant team. That's not part of the view per view.
Okay, all right. So we're waiting for the applicant team at a later point. Is that correct?
They would be available after Q and A.
Staff questions, okay. All right. Um, then to, to a staff question then. The city right-of-way on Fifty-Fifth is stated in the twenty nineteen Transportation Master Plan update as being planned for vertical separation between bike lanes and general traffic lanes. How has in, in the interim, the, the world has changed since this project was approved and including the twenty nineteen T M P. One of my concerns is as we go forward and build projects that future plans are not taken into account, and so we end up doing a streetscape one way, only to dig it up and redo it a couple of years later in a different fashion as, as a master plan like the T M P gets implemented. So how has, is there, is there any changes being proposed to Fifty-Fifth Street that would have to be modified at a future date to allow for a vertically separated bike lane along Fifty-Fifth?
So that's a great question, and I don't have the answer to it in front of me. If needed, we can track that down, but you know, it's important to note that the T M P is a vision plan and it's adopted, but it's ultimately implemented through things like the design and construction standards, the D C S. So to the extent that the, the regulations that were on the ground at the time this was approved get implemented. Yes, I, I would say there would have to be some sort of changes to Fifty-Fifth Street if it gets Yes, I, I would say there would have to be some sort of changes to 55th Street if it gets adopted and included as part of some sort of improvements to 55th. But I don't believe that would be something the applicant would be responsible for. Charles or Hella, do you have any thoughts on that?
Okay, that's, that concludes my questions, and I'll hold the rest of them for the applicant.
You know, Mark, we're happy to follow up on that. It's, it's not germane to the criteria that the board has to entertain tonight directly, but we're absolutely happy to get your response on that one way or another.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
That, thank you.
Okay, let's see. Laura, did you have your hand up or?
Thank you. I put it down. I'll wait till after the applicant presentation. Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you. All right. If, oh, Mark, your hand is still up. Did you have other questions? Okay. So I think at this point, we'll invite the applicant to let us know what's on their mind and probably respond to some of the questions that were raised in this section we just had. So is somebody speak here to speak for the applicant?
So Lill, you are free to share your screen if you'd like. Or let's see, Amanda Johnson, if you're on the call and Amanda Cusworth, you may need to promote a couple other folks onto the call.
Let's see who else I need to promote. Sorry, I'm promoting Amanda Johnson. Thank you.
And Amanda, can you also promote Mark Painter as well?
Sure can, yes.
Okay, we're eager to hear your thoughts.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
For some reason, it says the house has disabled screen sharing.
Sorry, Amanda, let, I'm promoting you to a co-host, so you should see that here in just a second.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Well, thanks for having us today. I'm Amanda Johnson, a principal at Oz Architecture. We have been working on this project since its conception, so we're really excited to be here today. And Oz has been a participant in Boulder's community for the last 60 years. So we're really proud of the work that we get to contribute to our built environment. As noted in the earlier presentation, our, our client, Biomed Realty, is also here and would like to introduce himself very quickly and, and then we'll move into the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Amanda. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
You're coming to, uh, thanks, Amanda and Elaine for the presentation. I'm Salil Paya, Police Senior Vice President, Biomed Realty. Good evening, members of the planning board. The, you know, we're really excited to be here and to bring this project vision to reality. We are very committed to advancing it to completion immediately. I know there were some questions around, you know, the second extension three years from now, et cetera, but we are committed to, to getting this out of the ground and built immediately. The project is fully funded. In fact, since we took over from the previous owner Crescent a few months ago, you know, we've retained the legacy team for continuity. And as you'll hear from Amanda over the next few minutes, you know, we've invested a material amount of money in advancing the project and have made a lot of progress. We, we also have Mark Painter here with Holland and Hart to advise on land use matters if they, if questions arise. More in, in the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill Hill. So Elaine did a great job of outlining our process through entitlements and permitting. We also wanted to take this opportunity to share what that looks like from design and construction perspective, so that you can understand the work that's gone into the project to date, starting you know, way back, and Elaine hit on this, so we don't need to review the all of the milestones. But in 2018, with the approval of the site review, the development agreement signed and tech docs submitted. We moved quickly into 2019 where we are continuing to modify our technical documents. Some easement dedications that we were required to make, and then ultimately engaging general contractor for pricing. So at the beginning of 2020, when we were intending to have approval of our permit, we had a contractor on board and were ready to go. The beginning of 2020, our tech docs were approved, we submitted and received approval of our building documents. And like we all experienced, were, were shocked at this unforeseen halt of construction activities due to COVID. Our construction projects were completely shut down for a long period of time. Commercial real estate activity completely paused for a long period of time. And not only due to COVID, but now to, due to the war, have seen unprecedented supply chain shortages. So you know, this says 2020. In reality, all of these things are still impacting our ability to deliver construction projects universally across the country and the globe, even now in 2020, but 2022. But despite that, in 2021, we were allowed to continue to progress the project. We reached out or we received our first project extension request. We continued to follow the process and procedure that we are required to for submittal and lot line readjustment. Our contractors started to reengage the sub-trades. We started to really have to come together with the sub consultants in multiple iterative meetings to try to understand supply chain, pricing escalation, in order to create a project that we could actually move forward. And now here we are in 2022 with a continued path to move this project forward. In January, we received our second project extension request. As we've mentioned, the general contractor and subcontractor market began to really actively continue to engage with us. Subcontractor contracts continue to be negotiated and awarded. We submitted and received approval of right-of-way permit applications and utility permit applications, which are currently in review. All of these things are required for us to be able to begin construction. As noted in May, Biomed acquired the property, but they picked up and really accelerated our ability to continue to move this project forward without loss of any momentum whatsoever. The building permit was acquired and, and $406,000 in fees were paid to receive that building permit. The contractor was now retained by Biomed in lieu of the previous owner, as well as our team to move this project forward to completion. Just last month, the site mobilize, mobilization was commenced and abatement is currently underway on site. A little bit of a, a view into what our next steps start to look like. In September, we have demolition, excavation and site improvements happening. This can't begin until the abatement is complete. That is currently underway. In 2023, you can see some major milestones of the building that our contractor has committed to with foundations complete, with the structure completing, with the enclosure completing and final inspections at the end of December with a March 2024 project completion. So overall, just a little bit of a recap on the diligence that our team and the ownership team has been working towards. Obviously, you saw the amount of not only approvals that are required for this project, but design work to obtain those per approvals as well as engagement with the contractor to be able to come to a development that can be implemented. In alignment to the good cause, obviously, the, just in addition to the extensions that we have requested. We are continuing, we had continued to move that project forward. And as you can see, Biomed has already committed $4.5 million of construction contracts to maintain the efficiency of the project despite the unprecedented market conditions that we've all experienced. And as Elaine noted, there are no additional changes to the planning and development code since our previous approvals were received. So at that note, we're here to answer any questions. Our owner is here to answer any questions that you might have of them. But we hope you can see it's how hard we have all worked to continue to move this project forward under the considerations that we have.
Well, thank you. You may recall that Mark had a couple of questions for you that, and George did too. Could you respond to them?
Would you like, Mark, to just reiterate the, any of the questions? You heard the first one, in what level of lead certification we might be achieving? We're really excited that our client is interested in achieving a lead certification for the building. We have been able to work towards that certification without affecting any of the previous approvals that are in place nor affecting the timeline to construction. But right now, we are targeting a lead silver development.
Thank you. And George was asking about the ownership transfer and so on. George, maybe you want to remind them of your question?
Yeah, I was curious. My understanding is you're, you're, you're a Blackstone company. I want to understand a little bit about your ownership. What other projects you have in the works in Boulder, just to, just to get a sense of, of what your commitment is to it. And then maybe you could also give us color on this development relative to if you've identified tenants already. What your expectations are as far as your pro forma, just so we can get some understanding of of how the economics and how the ownership worked for you.
Absolutely. You know, that's a great question. You know, I've been doing this, you know, life science research, supporting the life science research ecosystem for 15 plus years. We as a company have been, you know, an independent company for a while. Very recently, you know, our capital partner was Blackstone and through them, you know, various pension funds. But everything we do in every jurisdiction has always been very long-term. And that is absolutely our intent in Boulder as well, which is, you know, long-term ownership. Ultimately, what we are, Biomed Realty, and we're a service provider to the life sciences and tech ecosystem. And our clients are, you know, biotech pharma companies, many of them, you know, you've probably heard of. And research institutions, you know, like Pfizer and AstraZeneca, Bristol Myers, AbbVie, Amgen, Gilead, Merck, et cetera. Or institutions like, you know, Harvard Medical or UCSD. And hundreds of smaller tenants in earlier stages of their life cycles. These are companies, you know, little companies that eventually grow to establish bigger companies that do, you know, life-saving research. And for all of them, you know, what, what we do ultimately is mission critical support for real estate, capital and operations. And so we own and operate these buildings. By the numbers, we're about 23 billion. We're 15 million square feet across the portfolio. Multiple campuses, I want to say fantastic, like incredible campuses, like thriving ecosystems. We're real amazing. Research happens across every one of them. And, you know, we're active in development. Back to your question about what we're doing in Flatiron. And, and somebody should stop me if I'm straying outside of the, the purpose of this discussion. You asked for the introduction and, you know, this is very exciting. And I, I could talk for hours about what we do. You know, we live vicariously through the, the work that our tenants do. You know, they're busy curing cancer. And, you know, we're a service provider. But for Flatiron, you know, the, the decision in front of you happens to be one pillar of the overall strategy, you know, a class A purpose-built life science tech building. But we've also got a few other strategies that we've initiated, including a series of spec suites for smaller companies. And, you know, campus-wide amenitization, because ultimately, you know, these, these places have to be active and exciting. You know, with amenities for everybody, for the community, et cetera. And so that's all, you know, on the boards right now. It's just been a few months since we acquired it. So it's early days, but, you know, we, we have a dream and, you know, hopefully we'll have these conversations in fullness of time. But we've got quite a few things happening in, in Boulder. This happens to be the first, the most prominent of them. Does that give you some context?
Yeah, I appreciate it. What do you, what, what are your expectations for rents and currently in Flatirons that my understanding is they're I, I don't know, they're, they're mid, mid twenties, mid thirties. Do you expect, you know, a dramatic escalation as you guys take over and reposition this property?
What, what we usually, yeah, it's a great question. You know, what we often see is, you know, we have to meet the market where it's at and usually serve the market with a range of products. You know, there are small companies, big companies who require different things from us, you know, higher and lower levels of capital investment and infrastructure. And so we usually scale our product to solve for big, small, medium and everything in between. So that usually ends up being a range. We are also not the only ones in, you know, in the area doing what we're doing. And so when I say we meet the market here, we're, we're, you know, we're in conversations with various folks. Including, you know, companies that are already well-established here and have, you know, have a need to grow, but an unmet the real estate an unmet real estate need. So let me see. I would imagine that, you know, with our ex, so they're requiring higher, more than what exists today. More infrastructure, you know, institutional standards, et cetera. And so depending on what we see as we continue to test the market, you know, we'll either put a lot of money into it or a little and then set the rents accordingly. I expect it to be a range, you know, including starting at where it is right now and then more, you know, commensurate with additional infrastructure needs that these companies might require of us. We, we stay very flexible usually, because, you know, we, we want to be all things to all people. And, you know, depending on who the customer is and what they need, we're ready to invest in, in their science.
Thanks.
Laura?
Thank you. As folks might have anticipated, I have some questions related to the East Boulder sub-community plan. But I want to say first of all, hello to the applicant. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you to staff for a great presentation. And, you know, I'm, as far as I'm concerned, the extension is a slam dunk for the applicant. Like, I think you have met all the criteria. I don't have any concerns about that. I just wanted to ask Kathleen, I see you're here, I assume, because of the East Boulder sub-community plan. You know, if the applicant voluntarily wanted to wait until the East Boulder sub-community plan was approved. I see that this parcel is innovation TOD residential is what it's mapped out for. Is that, do I have that right?
Yes, that's the place type that we have identified in the East Boulder sub-community plan. I am not part of the review team for this project. I am actually here for comprehensive planning to support the next item.
Oh, okay. I thought you were.
I can't answer questions.
Okay. I thought you were here because of the connection to East Boulder. Gotcha. So I'm sorry, then that means you probably haven't prepared necessarily. So pardon me if, if this feels like I'm putting you on the hot seat. That's not my intention. But I do think that this, you know, this parcel is exciting because it's part of the East Boulder sub-community plan, which obviously is not in effect yet. It's not binding upon the applicant. They have no requirement to follow it. But am I right in assuming that if they voluntarily, you know, if they, if they don't complete this construction and market conditions change, and they wanted to either sell to a different company or pursue a different site design, that, that they would at some point, you know, the East Boulder sub-community plan would become binding. And then their option for construction becomes this innovation TOD residential place type that allows up to about four stories and, and quite a fair amount of housing. Do I have that? Am I understanding that correct? That if they wanted to, they could wait and have that option?
That's probably more of a question for Charles or Elaine, but I can say the next phase of work for the East Boulder team is to start looking at zoning and rezoning options, and that would be the guide for any, any considerations or, or future development projects.
I don't know if Charles or Elaine also wanted to respond to that. And then I have one more question.
Well, I think that's spot on what Kathleen suggested. There's still a ways to go on East Boulder sub-community plan. So given the fact that there's been a lot of momentum and plans submitted and approved and processes associated with this particular project. You know, obviously, I think they want to keep moving forward. They've got some construction staging in place, et cetera. So you know, maybe there's possibilities throughout the industrial business park for Biomed properties to consider. But for this one, I think we need to stay laser focused on the three criteria. And have that conversation maybe at a later date when we're talking about East Boulder sub-community plan.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I'm not. I'm not going to stand in the way of them getting their extension. I think that they, they, they will meet the criteria. I just wanted to make sure that it had been discussed with the applicant, like what the future of this area looks like and what their options might be if they wanted to, to wait or to sell to another property owner if market conditions change, that sort of thing. And then my, my last question is, if they do go ahead and build this building as purely a life sciences building, am I understanding correctly that if the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan is implemented as designed, that any redevelopment of this property would have to conform to that, whatever that new zoning is, which would put them in more of a residential mode rather than a life sciences building for any redevelopment, say twenty, thirty years in the future?
Charles, do you want to address that question?
Yeah, I think, you know, future redevelopment would have to be consistent with whatever zoning is on the ground at the time. And if they're in, involved in a site review process or other discretionary process, then consistency with the adopted East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, whatever formats. And at that time, we require compliance with that as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Those were my questions.
Okay. Mark, your hand is up.
Yeah, and I, like Laura, acknowledge that, and, and to what Elaine's point, that laser focus on the criteria. And staff had answered some questions for me about the ability of the board to impose any new conditions based on changes to the code, et cetera. So all of that's highly unlikely and it's extremely likely that we will go forward and offer an extension. So, but, but that, that sets the table. It doesn't, it doesn't keep me from having some questions that I think the applicant has come to us because of changes in the world. And I think that there are some changes in the world that I'm going to ask some questions about how they've responded to those. And one is, as far as I, from the drawings, from the packet that we were provided, it looks like ownership, even though they may be separately deeded, there is joint or familial ownership, not familial, but anyway, the ownership across multiple buildings kind of creates a campus. Is that correct? Of the buildings to the east and to the south?
Yeah, so this particular project is a combination of a handful of parcels of contiguous ownership. Biomed is also the new owner of those parcels as well. And the scope of the, or this development will apply universal landscape, site access, lighting, parking upgrades to all of those properties to help create the campus or cross connectivity or multimodal connections that, 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 that are required.
So it looks like, thank you, that, that was what I thought and you put it better than I did. It looks like essentially you are sharing parking infrastructure amongst those multiple contiguous sites. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Across those sites and specifically in relation to this site, in 2018, when you sought your initial approval, did you have a TDM plan, Transportation Demand Management Plan, around parking and access? And did you have a TDM plan at that time? If not, do you have one now? And, and if so, can you just briefly describe it for us?
A TDM plan is a requirement of the development and yes, it was provided and unapproved. What, what particularly would you be interested in understanding more about? It includes, obviously, the parking that's shared. It also includes the circulation and access across the sites, the entrances into the park, into this site and into the other contiguous sites, as well as the, the bike parking that is also required and provided as part of this development.
Great. Is there charging infrastructure for both the long-term bike parking? And is there charging infrastructure for the vehicle parking?
Yes, there is.
Should the ownership?
There's a lot of solar panels that help offset that charging.
Oh, great. Well, and, and in fact, that was one of my other questions. Somewhere in the packet, it said, it showed a, an elevation pointing to solar panels. And it said, solar panels optional. So are the solar panels optional or are they planned and to be implemented upon construction?
Sure, the solar panel, so, is the solar panels are being installed. It's about a hundred kilowatt PV system to meet our energy needs for the building and the project.
Great. Okay, the last thing I have is the access and layout. I, looks great. It looks like most of the parking for people who would drive to this, this site and work in this building is on the north side. And the entrance is really on the, on the southeast side, southeast corner. What, and, and I, I'm fine with that. That's great. People need to walk around and, and access, you know, buildings from their, from their design point. Am I, it, it would be a shame to have what sometimes happens in designs, to have a secondary entrance that is not attractive and not really great, become kind of a primary entrance by default due to its proximity to parking. Is there an entrance that I'm missing on the northeast or northwest side? Or are you really expecting people to come around that, that southeast side to enter the building?
Yeah, that's a great question and we agree, the front door should be the front door. What might not be obvious in the exhibits that you were shown is that because of the grade in the site and as is depicted in that big formal gesture with the, like the Z that kind of crawls down the face of the building, that's actually coming to a le- level of tuck-under parking essentially that is underneath, or that's on the main floor of the building. So we believe most people that are occupying this space will probably park in the tuck-under parking provided underneath our building and connect to the front door of the property. The, this is, this was a unique site. It had some unique grades for us to architecturally work through. And so that was a really clever way for us to hide parking within the site and not have to surface park everything.
Great, thank you very much. That concludes my questions.
ML?
Thank you, John, and thank you for answering questions. I guess there's the architecture team and the owner team. And I'm not sure if this is a question for staff or for, or for you all. But the project was essentially approved, started its process in 2018. And we got a new energy code in 2020. Would that not have been a component of? So I see Charles there. Would that not have been one of the criteria that there was new? That just new policy, updated policy?
It's a great question, ML. Thanks so much for that. Regardless, they'll be required to meet whatever energy and building codes we have on the books at the time they actually apply for their permit. So, you know, by the time they get in for their actual building permit review, they'll, they'll need to comply with the energy code as it exists at that time.
It's my understanding that the building permit has already been issued. Is that not true?
That's correct, yeah.
Right, so it would have been compliant with the code that was on the books at the time. And Elaine, was the permit 2019 or 2020?
Permit was just pulled in February.
Right.
Yeah, so, pretty recent version.
Right. Okay, well, that was my, that was my question. That there had been some changes and that they were accommodated. I would just like to also just make a comment. I'm looking at the rooftop diagram on page eight-six and how you have managed to get equipment on the roof without looking for a height extension or doing anything about making the whole building do a gesture toward equipment. It's an industrial site, it's going to have equipment, but you've got this great little diagram that just shows, you know, people on the ground, which are the people that are, we don't generally go craning our neck, right, looking up at things, we're not Manhattan. But I appreciate that you acknowledged, equipment's equipment. And there it is, it's kind of, you know, you, you pushed it into the middle and you dealt with the sidelines. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, that little gesture about keeping the building what it is. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions by the board of either staff or applicant right now? All seeing none? Oh, here. Oh, no, okay, I don't see any hands raised. So seeing none, we'll move into the public hearing.
For your time and for your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda, do we have anyone who has indicated they'd like to speak to this? From the public?
I don't see any hands yet.
Okay, well.
I still don't see any.
We'll give them another, oh, there's a hand. Okay.
Okay.
You want to run this?
Yes, Lynn Segal. Lynn, I will unmute you. And start a timer for you.
In the squeaky door and my, my grandkid came to town and I'm making dinner and like, I'm just juggling like fifty things. So I missed a lot of your thing, but I know this is the, the new Health Sciences Center. And so I would say, just from remember, remembering from before, I'm, I'm an ultrasound technologist. My daughter-in-law is a trauma surgeon. I understand the, the great, I'm from Seattle. The University of Washington had a fabulous Health Sciences Center. And that I, of course, support the health sciences. I think it's fabulous. We're getting all of this in Boulder. But I'd say kind of tone down any growth associated with housing because every time you have housing, you have low-paid workers to service the housing. Just like I was speaking about earlier with Gun Barrel. There are many reasons for Gun Barrel to be a concern that are far beyond the prairie dogs. But now that the prairie dog advocates have convinced the Gun Barrel citizens that this is the saving grace of Gun Barrel, they are distracted from the lack of the services. So in this project, the more housing that you have, the more services you're going to be depleted of. I'm not supportive, as you all know, and I know you've worked on this for endless years, Laura, the East Boulder Plan, Sub-Community Plan. I'm opposed to it. I'm opposed to major growth and expansion in Boulder. And especially in housing because this changes and increases our jobs-housing imbalance. And so that's what I would encourage about the, you know, the health sciences development here. So, you know, we don't have the rec centers, we don't have the libraries, we don't have the police, we don't have the fire support. We don't have the most important thing, and my name means it. Lynn is water in Welsh. Okay, water, my brother's water chemist, my daughter's a water climate scientist, data sculptor, you know, geographic data. She takes real data and creates it so that we can see what we're using, especially in water. She specializes in water. So what about water for all of this? And for all of this development that, I mean, even the health sciences jobs, of course, are going to bring demand for more and more and more. But I, I support them, but I say take it with some consternation as to how much more just growth for the sake of growth you're going to build in Boulder. Spread it out. And that these centers need to be outside of Boulder too. And, you know, Boulder is not the be-end and the, and all of everything. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay. Do we have any other speakers?
I, I don't see any at this time.
Okay, then I'll bring the public hearing of this session to a close and bring it back to the board for discussion. What do you folks think? Lisa?
Yeah, I think as other board members have said, it meets the criteria. I think we've had some good in-depth questions and commentary around it. But, yeah, I'm inclined to approve it on staff's recommendation and I agree with their, their findings that we should approve it.
Okay, I'll just mention that Charles sent out a decision matrix this afternoon that is very useful for us to review in coming to a decision.
Yeah, I really, I appreciate that, Charles, that was useful to look through.
So, other thoughts? Sarah, what do you think? Okay, that's a thumb up. ML?
Trying to find my speaker. You know, the only thing, and I, I have no problem with meeting the criteria. The only thing I would remind ourselves as a community and as a board, I think Mark made a nice point. It's, it's a lot of things have changed in the last handful of years. And, you know, this project used that as the basis for describing the situation that put them in a place to request this extension. But, you know, our, our housing situation is just staggering and getting worse. And, you know, the whole climate change thing. So I, I, it's, these projects come to us and, you know, they're done deals. But I, I hope that the people who are working on them and that will be working in these buildings don't lose sight that, you know, the world has changed.
Okay. Mark?
I'm, if no one else wants to, I, I'm going to make a motion to approve the extension. I'll just simply say that I, I, I'm, I'm actually really kind of excited by this as I, as I got onto Google Maps to, I just hadn't ridden out there in a little bit. But I, I've been out there a bunch and it's like, what building is this? And I realized that it is such a little ugly, low, little armory of a building. They're currently hidden behind some nasty invasive trees that it's like, well, this is a great thing. So anyway, I'm all, I'm all for approving the extension and hope the applicant does a good job and brings us some additional technology and, and life sciences wellness to our, to our environment. So I will go ahead and make a motion unless someone else was planning on doing that.
Well, I, I think that's fine. Let, why don't we hear what Laura has to say? And I have a couple of thoughts also.
Great, thank you.
Laura, go ahead.
I will be happy to support this motion and approve the extension. And, you know, if the applicant proceeds as they have described to us, as they intend to proceed with this life sciences building, I think that will be a wonderful addition to the community. I would just encourage the applicant to, if they have not already talked with staff to understand the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan and what the future zoning on and around this parcel are going to look like. I think that that's useful for informed decision-making because as we all know, conditions can change, market conditions can change. So just so that they understand their options and the future of this area of town, they said they're in it for the long haul. I think that would be a wonderful addition to the community. I think that would be a good thing for them to understand, but I am more than happy to support this extension. And if it goes forward as planned, I will be delighted.
Okay. See, we haven't heard from George yet.
Sure, appreciate the applicant answering the questions. I, I, I see that it meets all the criteria. See no reason why we wouldn't move forward with the extension. I, I will join ML in saying that, you know, this is one more Class A office building that's being constructed with no understanding of where these high-wage workers are going to go or if they're going to displace others. And that concerns me as sort of a broad issue, but as it relates to this project, I see no issue in granting the extension.
Okay. Well, I can, I think everyone has spoken. I'm, I can just say that I, I agree with the sentiments I've heard that, that I accept staff's recommendation on this. But I think it's also very important for the applicant to understand the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan and its objectives and its practical impacts on what is likely to happen with future projects. But that being said, I turn it over to Mark to make a motion.
Okay. Screen maneuvering. I move to approve an extension to Site Review Case Number LUR two zero one seven dash zero 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 eight one for a period not to exceed three years from the date of the decision on the request, incorporating the staff memorandum as findings of fact and subject to the conditions of approval recommended in the staff memorandum.
I will second that.
Okay. So we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Boone?
Hi.
Ms. Silver?
Hi.
I'm just trying to, Laura?
Hi.
ML?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
And I vote aye also. So with that, it's unanimous approval of the extension. Congratulations to the applicant. And make a beautiful job of it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, John, can we take like a just quick five-minute break before we go to the second item?
Sure. Okay, it's now seven thirteen, let's come back at seven twenty. Okay, it looks like we're pretty much all here again. Okay. I think we can move into our next public hearing, which is hearing and recommendation to City Council for the, regarding the Comprehensive Flood and Stormwater Master Plan and the master plan summary. And I think we have the Deputy Director from the Utilities Department here to present to us tonight. So.
Hey, John, it's.
We, we're looking forward to hearing your wisdom here.
Great, I, John, I'm gonna kick, kick things off for us tonight. I don't think I introduced myself earlier. My name is Kathleen King and I'm a Principal Planner in the city's Comprehensive Planning Work Group in PNDS. Comprehensive planning supports the citywide departments and the development of department master plans to ensure consistency with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. So tonight, Planning Board is reviewing the 2022 Comprehensive Flood and Stormwater Master Plan and considering a recommendation to council. And we have a presentation that staff will go through and I'll just ask Joanna to advance the next slide, please. So the Planning Board has an important role in our citywide department master plans. You will be asked to make a recommendation to City Council this evening on plan acceptance based on three key issues. So first is consistency with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Next, whether the master plan identifies how the city will meet the service standards identified in the BBCP. And then finally, whether capital needs and funding sources are identified in the plan. Go to the next slide, please. Master plans are one of the tools in the city's toolbox to help implement the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. The Comprehensive Flood and Stormwater Master Plan in turn will inform and be implemented through the city's capital improvement program as well as development codes and standards. Next slide, please. So here again are those key issues for Planning Board's consideration. And I will now turn it over to the Public Utilities Deputy Director Joanna Bloom to talk you through the master plan.
Thanks, Kathleen. Yes, and thanks Planning Board for having me here today. As Kathleen and John mentioned, I'm Joanna Bloom. I'm one of the two Deputy Directors for the utility. I'm on the policy and planning side and I am project managing the master plan as we go through some staffing transition. So thanks for your time tonight as I provide an overview. And I'll review the highlights of the key outcomes and recommendations from the CFS update today. And this master plan, along with engineering and regulatory frameworks, guides the implementation of drainage-specific work and other flood and storm utility programs. The recommendations in this document really authentically reflect the feedback we heard from the community. It embodies Boulder's values, captures the strategic vision of the flood and storm utility and positions us to move forward expeditiously. So just for some quick context before I launch into the highlights, Boulder has sixteen major drainage ways. The map displayed here shows the current flood conveyance levels for each. So for example, the dark red lines indicate five-year current conveyance capacity and the dark blue lines indicate a hundred-year conveyance capacity. And the CFS has a citywide focus, however, and provides guidance for all sixteen of these drainage ways at the policy level. Regarding process, the project team worked with a community working group throughout the project duration, including two community connectors and one Water Resources Advisory Board member to broaden our engagement with the community. The list of efforts that you see here on the screen details the various activities that we undertook to identify issues, inform the project prioritization framework, and ultimately to inform the recommendations in the updated plan. And the Community Working Group or CWG authored a findings report that's included as an appendix to Volume Two of the master plan and was also included in the board packet materials you received for this evening. The findings report echoes many of the plan highlights that I'll cover today. Just to quickly orient you to the document, the updated master plan is laid out in two volumes. Volume one is intended for a general audience with summary-level information that's consistent with other master plans and has been translated into Spanish. And volume two is a technical plan with, with more detail and is a compilation of eleven technical memos that were drafted throughout the process. And it's intended for an audience who has or wants more detailed knowledge of the flood and storm water system. Okay, so moving on to plan highlights, there were six major outcomes and a discussion of funding considerations in the plan that I'll highlight today. We've received feedback and incorporated comments from staff, the CWG, the community, and the Water Resources Advisory Board, and incorporated that into the drafts that was, that were included in your packet and then are also available online. And the first and potentially the most impactful outcome of the plan is the project prioritization framework. To first provide some context, I'd like to review how flood projects become identified or come to be identified. So this circle that you see on the screen shows the cycle of major flood projects, beginning with floodplain mapping in the dark blue and then moving into drainage way-specific mitigation planning, and then finally moving into design and construction before returning to floodplain mapping to reevaluate flood risk. Since 2004, Boulder has completed approximately two-thirds of this project cycle for major flood projects. And these are kind of represented by the blue polygons on the screen. And then in terms of planning and preparation, we have included or we've completed ten of sixteen mitigation plans and fifteen of sixteen mapping studies. This leaves the city with roughly thirty identified projects, depending upon how and if they're grouped together, that need to be designed and built. And these are represented by the green polygon. So the prioritization framework was developed with the data we received from an online voting exercise that we did with the RAB, the public and the CWG in the fall of 2021. And it supports the prioritization of the thirty-plus major flood projects we just discussed in a way that's consistent with community values, provides an objective way to compare projects against one another and depoliticizes which projects go next. So meaning projects that do the greatest good go to the top of the list. And the last point is really important. Establishing this framework will support faster completion of projects since public engagement can have a major impact on how quickly a project can be implemented. I know this slide is, is busy, I don't expect you to read it all. However, I did want to show you how the criteria have associated metrics, the majority of which are quantitative with the few that are semi-quantitative, such as multiple benefits. And these metrics are used to assign a weighted value to each project and then they're compared across the city in terms of which one gets promoted for the capital improvement process every year. And another major outcome of the plan is the inclusion of racial equity considerations throughout the plan. So with regard to the prioritization framework, project prioritization has historically relied heavily on cost-benefit analysis and avoided damages, which results in prioritizing property protection in affluent areas. By including racial equity considerations using metrics like the Social Vulnerability Index, projects are prioritized in areas where people need them the most. So for example, you'll see Project A has a large equity benefit, that's that dark blue line, and therefore it ranks higher in comparison to other projects in terms of priority than it might otherwise. Shown here again in a different format, project order prioritized on the basis of benefit cost ratios alone, shown in the first column. And then project order using the prioritization framework, including racial equity considerations, is shown in the second column. And that same Project A from the previous slide moves from six, sixth on the list to third on the list. Okay, so another major outcome of the plan is related to climate change. The plan recommends that Boulder continue to be a leader in this area and recognizes that although there's inherent uncertainty related to specific climate change impacts, there is a clear need to act now. So to do that, the plan recommends that the city continue to actively incorporate adaptive measures for flood features, design elements for flood protection to the maximum extent feasible, and incorporate natural elements that support our climate. and incorporate natural elements that support our climate goals. Another major focus area was related to emergency preparedness. The plan clarifies both city and community member roles in emergency situations, including those related to insurance, emergency alert systems, and personal response plans. We received a lot of great feedback from our community connectors on ways to enhance emergency communications to reach Spanish-speaking residents going forward that are included as recommendations in the plan. Along those same lines, the plan makes recommendations to enhance outreach with a particular focus on targeting traditionally hard-to-reach populations, and this is an area of continual improvement, but the plan recommends a focus on tailoring messaging to reach specific audiences. A focus on maintenance of existing systems was a continuous theme throughout the process, going back to the first citywide Be Heard Boulder survey that we completed in the beginning of 2020 as a part of this process. The plan recommends measures to support enhanced maintenance through three primary approaches. The first approach is ensuring adequate staffing and easements. Access to open drainage ways is sporadic, and ensuring this access is essential to effective maintenance. Additionally, with regard to maintenance frequency, maintenance of the stormwater system, so primarily piped infrastructure, is adequately staffed to provide a 15-year maintenance cycle. Maintenance of open channels, on the other hand, so creeks and open drainages, is not adequately staffed to complete routine system-wide maintenance with any regular frequency. And the second approach involves managing expectations related to maintenance. For example, maintenance can include removing sediment and trees, which can be highly disruptive and understandably upsetting at times. Managing expectations and communicating benefits of such efforts can be key to successful maintenance. And lastly, the plan recommends clarifying roles and responsibilities for public and private systems to improve maintenance efficiency. And finally, the plan discusses funding considerations. This largely, the funding conversation is in the context of the city being built out prior to the establishment of the flood and storm utility. Meaning unlike some of our other neighboring communities, Boulder doesn't have vast undeveloped floodplains left. Therefore, we're effectively retrofitting the city for storm and flood in many cases, and there's a backlog of projects. So the plan identifies approximately $350 million worth of projects. And at the current action level of funding, the city anticipates that these projects would be completed in approximately 50 years. We received kind of a mixed bag from the community on this one. We received comments that the city should raise rates to what's needed to move at a much faster pace. Conversely, we've also received feedback that the city should carefully consider how rate increases will affect those who have limited ability to pay. The master plan does currently recommend moving from the current action level of funding to the vision level of funding to accelerate the pace of completing major funding, major flood mitigation projects. Implementing this vision option would require three things: funding, increased staffing, and community and political support. And I'll just draw your attention to this green triangle in the lower-left corner. It kind of shows those three elements that impact major flood project pacing. And there's kind of a persistent thought that funding is the main limiting factor associated with pacing of implementing some of these projects. However, from our experience, we run into staffing and engagement-related constraints well before we experience funding limitations. And then just a quick note on schedule before we entertain questions. In July, we went to the Water Resources Advisory Board, June and July, and in July, they unanimously recommended plan approval. And we're here tonight to ask for a Planning Board recommendation and are anticipating going to council for a public hearing in September. And I might pause there for now, and I'm available to ask questions, and we also have two members from our consultant team from Tetra Tech that helped draft the plan. Amy and Vicky are also on the line. Should you all have questions?
Thank you. That was a nice presentation. Okay, board members. Questions? I'll start out if, oh, hold it. ML has her hand up.
John, I think you should go ahead. This is like your area of expertise. I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Oh, that sounds dangerous. Well, I will go ahead then. I just have a couple. First of all, I'd like to say that I may have an unfair advantage in that I've been attending the RAB meetings on behalf of the Planning Board for quite a while now, and I attended the the hearing that was held for this also, although I I didn't participate in it directly. But a couple of questions, maybe for Joanna. One is, I think it would be useful if you could go into the levels of service that are described in the in this comprehensive plan. Because it's not always clear, I think, to those who haven't delved into it a bit. Could you discuss that?
Sure, I can speak to it from a high level. So as I mentioned, this plan is kind of the overarching plan. I will stop my screen share, but I'm happy to pop that back up if you all need. This relates on a policy level to all of the drainage way mitigation plans that I spoke about. Those plans go through their own public process and approval process as well. They get approved by city council. And the level of service provided along each drainage way is really determined through those mitigation plans. So for example, if there's not land available to provide 100-year level of service, which is kind of the gold standard from the federal level from FEMA, then we might do less than 100-year level of service if that is what the neighbors want along that stretch of creek, and if that's the maximum amount that we're able to provide. And so we kind of go through that process in the process of developing those mitigation plans. And I might just ask Amy if she wants to speak to the kind of 100-year level that I mentioned from FEMA, even though we evaluate different levels of funding in that process as well.
So it's also the standard included in the Boulder Valley Plan. It's to provide 100-year a level of service for conveyance unless there is a council-approved change to the mitigation plan, which is how the mitigation planning process functions. And so the idea is that the drainages will all be evaluated on larger storm events, regardless of whatever level of services is determined is most feasible. But they will all be determined at least up to the 500-year event to see how it performs in larger events as well.
Thank you. So just to inquire a bit further, so basically one cannot predict what level of service might be adopted for each drainage until there's a design proposed and a city council adoption of that design. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I do, I mean, to speak to some of our climate change goals, the goal is always to achieve the maximum amount of protection possible as we're going to see more frequent events. I do think that that's one of our stated goals. However, it's just not possible in all of our drainage ways, particularly, I don't think I mentioned it in the presentation, but the flood and storm utility was developed kind of well in Boulder in 1973, which is in alignment with what has happened regionally. And so, you know, our utility was developed 100 years after the city was, more or less. And so we just don't have the freedom in some areas to achieve higher levels, even if we wanted to.
Okay, well, thank you. I I have other questions, but I see there are several hands raised, so we'll start with ML, and I'll get back to you later.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Joanna. That was a a very nicely comprehensive, yet there's enough detail. I really appreciated your presentation, and it brought up a couple of questions for me. One was regarding the public participation. And I'm wondering, was there a survey done post-2013 while all of these sort of flood and water disasters were on the forefront of people's thinking so that, you know, we could capture fresh fresh from the trenches input from the public? Was there that done in 2013, and did that come forward and inform? How did that play into the information that was used in the current process?
Yeah, thank you for the question, and I would have to go back and see if there was a specific survey. I do know that there was a 2014 memo that kind of tried to do a damage assessment across the utility, and I know staff, I was one of them, met with folks in in town to kind of survey the damage from a lot of different levels. We did hear themes from what we learned from the 2013 flood, both on the staff side but also in the community side. For example, sewer backups was a big theme that we heard in 2013. I know parts of the city were hit hard when our sanitary sewer system was overloaded from infiltration, and that backed up into people's homes and flooded. So even if it wasn't over bank flooding, it still went into homes. And so that was a question that was raised in the community process, and we are doing things to address that, which I can speak to as well. But that was one theme. And then also just, you know, when is this major flood project going to be built in my area? We did hear a sense of urgency from people that these take so long, and why do these major flood projects take so long? Which is an understandable sentiment. And so there were kind of large themes like that that are carried forward in this plan. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And I appreciate hearing that. I was thinking about the public, but of course, it impacts the staff also. He knows, he's like, oh, here's what happened then. Let's make sure we learn. I like that. So my second question, I really, I was fascinated when you added the criteria of racial equity to your prioritization matrix and how it moves things around so significantly. What I'm curious about is, I know you talked about sort of the original call I'm having to do. I don't, I don't remember exactly, economics it seemed like. But do you have a component in that prioritization matrix that speaks directly to the evolving climate crisis?
That is a great question. I do feel like we have infrastructure resilience in there. There are, there were nine original criteria, and I can pull them up here on the screen to the degree that that's helpful. I do think an Amy and Vicky can help me if I get it wrong, but but to speak to some of the goals that we're trying to achieve, I think, you know, protection of critical facilities and infrastructure resilience, right? Again, back to this, if there's more frequent events, it's important for our infrastructure to not just be one and done, right? Like, it has to withstand multiple events. And so it's in there in that component, but in terms of, you know, measuring greenhouse gases or things like that, it's not in there. But I would invite Amy and Vicky to chime in if you have anything to add to that.
Just quickly, this is Vicky, Sharon Hore speaking, and yes, we've embodied that infrastructure resilience as part of the scoring in the matrix, and it specifically, as Joanna said, talks to the protection of property, the level of service measures as well.
Um, because I guess I'm thinking about the storm water systems and how they get overwhelmed. I live by North Boulder Park, and you know, we've seen kind of that fake rock fly up in the air when that system is is overrun, where everything is going into the storm drains rather than percolating on site. So are there any components of the stormwater management that speaks to, let's not put everything into stormwater. Let's let it let's create perviousness so that we can recharge our groundwater. How, I mean, nothing is disconnected from anything, right? You're designing a building, but you've got to be thinking about these things. So I'm curious. Does your, it seems like this would be the place kind of where it starts to trickle upward, because most people don't think twice about paving over everything, and you're like, yeah, but we need to be responsible not to put everything into the storm drains, so.
Yes, and I hope I didn't interrupt your train of thought by putting this slide up on the screen. I'll just show you. This partially touches on your concern. I believe we do try to incorporate natural elements into our projects as much as possible, and I'll just show two quick examples kind of before and after of projects that we've built in the last several years. So you know, the before picture on the left, you'll see this kind of channelized concrete channel. When we redid, when we developed the flood mitigation plan along Elmer's Two Mile, we do try to kind of incorporate as much of that natural, as many natural elements as we can. I think the reality in a lot of these major flood events is that what makes them a flood event is that it is, the ground is past the point of saturation, and so you've hit that point where everything's going to soak in, so there's no more that can. The idea is that we convey it where we can, to the degree possible. And then and then, you know, there's other approaches that we can take as well, but let me just show you this other picture as well. So, you know, we do try to incorporate as many wetlands as we can into our projects. That's not to say that there isn't any concrete, but it is absolutely a focus to meet our climate goals.
Thank you. Yeah, it would just be nice to see some responsibility passed on to other, the private, the private sector for making sure that we don't overwhelm our our stormwater systems. I appreciate your answers and great pictures. Thank you so much.
Okay, Sarah?
And thanks, Joanna, for this. So just first a comment to ML, just so you know, ML, you may not recall this, but the plan for the Alpine Balsam area is going to include one of those waterways that Joanna just showed us so that flooding in North Boulder Park can actually flow east. But my question has to do, it's a if-then question, Joanna. Can you just repeat essentially what you said about cost-benefit being either de-prioritized or replaced with equity as one of the seven criteria?
Yeah, for sure. And so just to clarify, cost-benefit analysis is still very much a piece of our prioritization criteria. And I think, you know, traditionally, and I'm not an engineer, but both Amy and Vicky are, so if I get this wrong, they can correct me, but you know, traditionally, you look at property damage with a dollar amount or losses avoided with a dollar amount, and that is how projects, you know, if you avoid damages, then you save the bigger, the more expensive the house, the more damages you avoid. And so if you only look at that criteria, it tends to benefit affluent areas just kind of by default. And so that is still in there. We still want to protect property for sure. And I will just throw this back up on the screen. I have a hard time multitasking, but so you'll see the the criteria that are here in the legend. And so cost, I think it's in cost, and Vicky, maybe you can correct me when I'm done speaking, but the cost-benefit analysis is definitely still in here. We also just incorporated the social vulnerability index, which is something that the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, they have their own criteria. They have their own criteria that go into that number based on census data. And so we included that as a measurement. And when we went out to the community last fall and we said, hey, where does all this stuff rank? Not surprisingly, life safety ranks number one for everybody. But equity was up there in the top three as a really important community value. And so the way that we incorporated it in here. Was through this social vulnerability index and cost ranked lower. So it just has a lower percentage of the total value for the project, but it's still incorporated in there.
And the reason I ask, so I really appreciate that explanation and I understand and appreciate the need to incorporate equity. And so the then question is, can you please help us to understand? When, when damages exist to infrastructure, not to a person's individual home? Because that's flood insurance, if they can get flood insurance. But all the other damage that might happen in a flood. Who, who pays for that? Who pays to fix that damage?
From a flood to public infrastructure? We do. So the, I mean, I, I can speak just broadly to the utility infrastructure that we own. So for example, the sewer systems, right? When they get overwhelmed, that is something that your utility bills, that is how we're funded, would pay for those repairs. And so we touched on this earlier. There are some infrastructure improvement projects happening that include those capital improvements to things like the storm and, and flood infrastructure. I will say, oh.
I'm, I'm sorry, let me just follow up because this may be where you're going, but I want to make sure I'm. Clarifying where I'm, what I'm just trying to understand.
Sure.
By deprioritizing, but not eliminating cost benefit. Are we, and this is not related to equity. This is just related to where we're prioritizing cost benefit. Are we increasing the risk of damage to public resources? Because the cost benefit is not a higher priority?
I'm sure Amy's squirming. Let me just say my answer and then Amy, you can, you can chime in here. I believe cost benefit analysis is done on property, private property within the floodplain. So the, the flood and storm infrastructure is designed to meet a certain level of impact, right? So if we have a hundred year flood, it doesn't mean that it wipes out that hundred year infrastructure. It means that that infrastructure can withstand it. So for, when we, when we incorporate infrastructure resilience, it means that we're not having to repay for something that we've already built. This cost benefit analysis applies to the private property damage that's avoided. But, but Amy, am I, did I say any of that wrong?
That's, that's correct. The cost benefit is the cost to build the project and how much the insurance company no longer has to pay. So that's the benefit is that we don't have to pay payout claims.
Okay.
We being the insurance company, not the city.
Okay, and it only applies to privately owned property. Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you very much. That was my, those were my questions.
Okay. Laura?
Thank you Joanna for the presentation. And I, I just want to say that I was really impressed with the work that you did, with the community outreach that you did. And the way that that was incorporated into an actual decision-making tool. I mean, that's, that's incredible that it wasn't just, you, you took some qualitative data, but you also worked with a voting exercise that you were able to incorporate into this project prioritization framework. And I also appreciated that you said that this is something that may evolve and change. And you'll, I imagine you'll probably take the community's pulse in years to come and see if that impacts how people rank the values differently. So I dove into this because I'm interested in this kind of topic. And I just was blown away by what the staff and I assume with your, your consultant team, I want to give them credit to, did to develop this project prioritization. I wanted to call out appendix D, the presentation that was given to the RAB that really kind of clarified how you took each of the individual criteria and then use that to create a ranking of projects on each criteria so that you could then weight the criteria against each other in a mathematical way that makes sense. I'm probably not explaining that very well, but your presentation explains it very well. As well as the documentation in that second volume of your stormwater master plan. And clearly a lot of thought went into this. And it's such a great example. So my question is whether this is something that is, is, is quite innovative within the city of Boulder? Or is this the kind of tool that is used for other kinds of project prioritization in other departments? That may have a similar need to incorporate community values into how you prioritize projects against each other? Are you like out in front? Are you pioneering this? Or is this something that is also applied in other city departments?
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you for your kind words and really all credit to the team. They did do a fantastic job. Really, I felt like making this an authentic process. I do know it was inspired by the city's racial equity plan. In terms of incorporating that piece of it. But we also just kind of had to, had to be nimble with COVID. I do know there's an engagement coordination committee that does share information like this. So I can't take credit for, for our team being the only one doing this type of thing. I do think they share ideas and they learn from each other. And so, and likewise, we learn from them. So I do think that this is something that we did receive positive feedback from the community working group and others that used it. And, you know, nothing is, is flawless. But I do think that we, we received some positive feedback and it is definitely something that when it's appropriate, we will absolutely use again.
Thank you.
Okay, now I have a chance again. Just to continue on this, on the prioritization techniques that you described and which I think are, sound very good. I think that the challenge is always with these things that are difficult to quantify. So do you intend in the future to make these, these rankings and the, the prioritization procedures public? So that people can see why they're further down on the list or further up on the list?
Yes, absolutely. And actually, and I know that the volume two was lengthy. But chapter 10 of volume two does describe how we took the, and I'll just kind of show you the, the raw data voting results that we received from the, it's called dot storming, from that voting exercise. See, this is the raw data that we then plugged into the model. And this is described in more detail in chapter 10 about how we then distilled it into a model just for, for usability sake. Nothing went away. It just kind of got reordered. And, oh, I feel like you asked the second part of your question, which I am now forgetting. But it's absolutely public.
Yeah, so that people can understand why, if they're on one drainage, that they don't get the same ranking in their order of projects as people in another drainage.
Oh, for, yes, for sure. Thank you for clarifying. So yeah, after the plan is approved, you know, this, this portion of the plan was to develop the framework and, and have approval of the framework. As soon as that framework is approved, we will take our backlog of CIP projects and incorporate it into that. And then show all 16 drainages or all identified projects in that prioritization order. And that will be available every year during the capital improvement program process that we go through with the Water Resources Advisory Board. And there's associated public hearings with that. And we're happy to answer our questions throughout as well. But anytime there's a new project, we'll go ahead and plug it in and, and show everybody where that one falls among the ranking as well. But absolutely, we plan to use it in communicating what we do when.
Okay, I, I think that transparency is important, not only in providing people where that, what their priority is, but, but so they can understand how those priorities were obtained and developed.
Absolutely.
Okay, Mark?
Hi, thanks, John. I, I will also want to say, I, like Laura and the others have mentioned, as I read through this plan, I was impressed with both how cities equity goals have been incorporated. And also just the simple statement. I, I love plans that begin with simple statements in that this one says, do the greatest good first. And you know what? I, I think many times as citizens, as residents, we kind of assume this, but it's not stated. And, and so unless it's stated, it, it, it doesn't necessarily happen. So I think that stating that kind of premise upfront is, is excellent. And I, I think that all of our plans should incorporate that sort of statement. And I don't think that all of them do. I want to ask some questions that may be leading, maybe a little positional, but I'm going to ask. Our greenways are essentially our, our drainages, which are our floodways, et cetera. So we have 16 drainages. And, and am I correct? And? All 16 of those include some sort of some length pedestrian cycling infrastructure that's incorporated into and combined with flood mitigation and safety. Is, do all 16 qualify in that regard?
Yes, and I, I wouldn't say so with a hundred percent certainty, but with 99% certainty, yes, there is some stretch.
Okay. Um, who's responsible? If I, if I had said, gee, I'm on a, I'm, I'm walking along a bike path and I see a, I see a problem with the concrete or whatever. Gee, do I call the Greenway Department or who do I call?
I appreciate your question. This is a question that comes up for us. And we did identify it for the 2023 utilities work plan. Currently, as a department, and this isn't something that we, you know, if I was answering a question for the public, I would say the city. The city is responsible for that. But kind of getting more granular, currently, the approach that we have is the underlying property owner and land manager for that parcel is responsible for that portion of greenway. So for example, if it's a flood area, utilities owned area, utilities would go out and do it. Transportation maintains a lot of the multi-use paths. And then the six feet next to it. But then if there's a green strip next to that, then utilities will go out. So you can see why it's a work item for 2023. There are probably, there's room for improvement and for increased efficiencies. And I am excited that we are currently hiring a greenways program manager to help us answer exactly that question. Since the program is largely at buildout now and we're, we're moving more into an operational state.
So that position, which my understanding was eliminated, or well, it was unfilled several, going on several years ago, now eliminated, whatever you want, however you want to say it. But that position as a, as a greenways coordinator, as a central kind of focal point will be filled?
Yeah, so it's, it's a greenways program manager and it's a currently, and this is not normally the preference for hiring, but it is a two-year fixed term partly because depending upon where the program lands in terms of the approach exactly to your question about who's doing what. And then we'll decide where it, it lands long-term. But yeah, it'll be, it'll be somebody who, who gets at the heart of, of what you're asking.
And for whom will that person work? What department?
Currently, there, yeah, so currently, and water quality will manage. The stormwater quality group will manage that position. And partly because they have overlap with some of the natural green spaces and the invasive weed component that is sometimes associated with greenways.
Okay, I think that's it for my questions. I've got some comments after we do the public hearing and stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll take the opportunity, I can't resist poking a little more on this. Can you talk about a little bit more about how you're dealing with the, the issue of, of climate change? And, you know, increasing, changing levels of what a hundred year flood actually means? In terms of? What, what, how, how those criteria might change as, as we learn more about climate, what's happening as a consequence of climate change and non-stationarity of, of storms and so on?
Yeah, so for sure, this was an area of interest particularly for some of our community working group members. And there's, there's kind of three main areas that we, that the plan proposes addressing our climate change goals. And one of them is adaptive measures, right? So kind of learning by doing like you're describing. And I think some of that will get ferreted out when the mitigation plans and the actual design happens. There is some discretion there, even though there's a level of service, for example, that's identified. If we can do small tweaks to increase that level of service that isn't on the step that is generally prescribed by floodplain mapping. So for example, at the hundred year or 500 year step, like nobody maps for the 133 year flood. But if we can do project design elements, add those in construction, that's one way that we can kind of adapt the project to do, to have the maximum benefit. We also do, even though the, the regulatory mapping is one dimensional, our flood mitigation plans do look at 2D mapping so that they can see what design elements will go into these mitigation plans. And regardless of what the, the plan ultimately recommends, we will look at the various storm levels. So 100 year flood, 500 year flood, and we'll see what a project would do in each of those cases. So we fully understand the flood risk and then be able to design for the maximum possible protection. And then some of those natural elements that we saw before too as well, enhancing and increasing our wetlands where possible. Is definitely an approach. Amy, do you have any? From the engineering side, anything you would add to that? Or Vicky?
I have a couple if, if it's helpful. One of the things that the CWG really underscored and we agreed with them is to just stay current with the science. So that it, it aligns with what Joanna was speaking to, but that was very important. And I think that's a valid element. And then the other idea with the adaptive management is that where we can in that mitigation stage, thinking about designs that can be more cost effectively retrofitted in the future. So for instance, if we design a system that's there to protect, but we recognize that over time, perhaps an area may see increased flooding, which means flooding. We don't want to lose things in, in the overbank flooding and cause damage. So perhaps there are ways that we can design in future ways to increase the height or say a berm or other ways that could cost effectively in the future, add additional protection.
Well, that, you know, that makes great sense. I, I, I just haven't seen that explicit in the comprehensive plan here, but I presume it's in there somewhere.
It is for sure. I think it's in chapter eight, flood mitigation. Get some there.
All right, any further questions? Of staff? Well, thank you. I think I'll bring it to the board for discussion now. Be interested in my colleagues' thoughts here.
John, do we need to do a public hearing?
Oh, yes, we do. How embarrassing. Yes, time for a public hearing. You'll see, oh, and we have a hand raised here. So Amanda, do you want to run the, the public hearing here?
I, I sure will. John, let me promote Lisa Spalding. You have, let's see. All right, Lisa, you go ahead. You've got three minutes and I'll start a timer.
Thank you. I'm interested in the part, I don't think I quite understood when you were talking about how you consulted with neighborhoods after the 2013 flood. And also what the hundred year flood and the 1970s. And also, what the 100-year flood and the 1970s, was that 1970s criteria federal or municipal? And particularly, I live in the western part of Boulder, near Sixth Street, where the Gregory Creek like went through and just created havoc. But there are a huge number of rentals here. And if you're asking neighbors what they think of flood protection, are you including like what the increase in cost is? Because if you're talking to a lot of the landlords around where I live, they're not going to be interested in paying anything more. So if you could give us, give me a little more information on that, I would be really happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And after we're done with the public hearing, we'll give staff a chance to respond to your question. Do we have any other people who want to talk? Oh, Amanda, go ahead.
Yep, yeah, it looks like we've got Lynn Segal. Lynn, you are good to go.
In February, late February of two years ago, right before the pandemic, I went for the first time in forever to go with my family to Sun Valley. That was a bad mistake because Sam Weaver, when we were gone, there was a study session and he redirected, do you understand, redirected council? And the planning board had both charged for a 500-year flood. He redirected them to 100-year flood. That is unconscionable. You can't do that without public hearings, without the city council, without the planning board. They already made the decision. The decision was clear. I know you said that you plan for all 500-year floods, but you do something else for 100-year floods. Well, Sam took it exclusively upon himself to decide that it was going to be 100-year flood. And this was a deal, going back to the Flatiron's gravity gravel company purchase, which the city of Boulder lost. They overvalued property, they inflated the value by the 5 million or 6 million, from nine to 16 million, the city of Boulder couldn't buy it. So many in the community are upset about that original sin, that the city couldn't buy it. So see, you can't say, oh, but we own it and we can do what we want there. And we drive all of Boulder. No, a lot of bad, bad, evil things have happened in the past. And they need to be rectified now. No, on CU South. You know, the 42-inch interceptor, way of connecting all of the sewer systems and sanitary and other sewer. And when this gets inundated in a huge way, it's going to go all the way to the water treatment plant. And I hope our city has enough insurance. But guess what? I don't think Flint, Michigan had enough insurance. I don't think that we have enough insurance to encounter a major, major event like that. And I don't think it's respectful of the lower-class people that can't afford high rates to put that onto them over the future, no? So we need the highest possible 500-year at our disposal, and especially for CU South. We can't afford these water bills. This is a regressive tax. So consider that and consider what's happened in the past. Put us where we are.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, any other folks who want to speak to us tonight? I don't see any.
I don't either.
Okay, then I'll bring the public hearing to a close and bring it back to Planning Board for discussion.
John, Lisa asked some questions. Staff?
Oh, go ahead. Feel free.
Yeah, and I was frantically typing as the speaker was speaking. So I hope I got the questions right, but feel free to clarify. So in terms of the response from the community after the 2013 flood and what we heard back, I know there was a lot of testimony given at City Council and also at the Water Resources Advisory Board immediately following the flood and then, and then in the following years. And there was a 75% rate increase in response and that the Water Resource Advisory Board supported and that council ultimately approved to accelerate some of the city's programs, like the storm sewer or the sanitary sewer program, rehabilitation that I mentioned before. And I'm happy to report, we have made a lot of progress. We're over halfway done with relining some of those sewers so that we don't have a repeat of that. We also did do when we first started, and this was a ways after the 2014 flood, but just to kind of reconfirm community interest, there was a Be Heard Boulder survey back in January of 2020. And it reconfirmed a lot of the same areas that we heard. And understandably, people have said, hey, in 2013, this is what I experienced. One of the themes, as another example, is there were a lot of irrigation ditch and drainage way connections. We heard, hey, the irrigation ditches weren't developed for that. Separate those where possible so that flooding doesn't go in unanticipated areas. And so you'll see some of that disconnection in the area of the Wonderland Creek Project, where the Boulder and White Rock Ditch now is separated and has controllable flows. And then the flood flows would go down Wonderland Creek. So elements like that have been incorporated since the 2013 flood, directly from community feedback. And then in terms of Gregory Creek, I admit, I don't know exactly where this stretch works. It's currently in two phases in our capital improvement program. We have been sitting at people's, you know, dining room tables and in their living rooms, talking to individual owners along the current stretch that is proposed and approved or recommended for approval in our 2023 CIP program. So there is an active project happening that's in design and construction along the lower end of Gregory Creek. And that upper portion is also a project to be prioritized here, among the other projects, as soon as this plan is approved. And we are always happy to talk to individuals more about their specific areas. So I hope that addressed the questions.
I think it did. And I'm sure that Lisa Spalding will be in direct contact if she has further questions with you.
Perfect. She's more than welcome.
Okay. And if there's any other further questions from the board to staff, now's the time to ask them. I don't see any hands raised. Okay, let's take it to the board. What do you think? ML? Oh, all right. Laura, you have your hand up.
I was just going to say that when the time comes, I would be happy to make the motion that staff have suggested in recommending this plan to City Council.
Okay. Sarah?
So it seems to me that the question we probably need to address, rather than the content of the plan, is the question of what, what level of funding we want to incorporate, we want to recommend to council. And I'd like, I personally would like to hear a little bit more from staff. I'm sorry, I didn't ask earlier about the discussions that were, have already been held. I know that Rab called for the vision level of funding. And I know ultimately it's up to council. But I just am curious to know more about how the working group conversations, sort of what, what arguments were being made. And because we'll have, I think we want to probably recommend a level of funding in the final recommendation or motion we send to council.
Okay, Lisa?
Yeah, similar overall, you know, I just fully support it. I'd also like to understand the funding option or funding suggestions a little bit better. My gut instinct is to recommend maximum funding that we can because we're going to pay for it now or we're going to pay for it later. And we should invest now. Yeah, so kind of similar to what others have said, very much in support. And then I'd like to understand what our role is around recommending funding and kind of get a temperature check from other board members on what level they would recommend, if that's something we should be doing.
Okay. Well, I think that's, it'd be very interesting to hear from Joanna on the funding question. And I have to say, I'm losing contact. I'm going to log out and log in right away, hoping, hoping that'll change things. So I'm coming right back and, and Sarah, deputy, you're in charge until I get back.
Okay, ML, John's coming back. I took the opportunity to flip to the, the funding table that we included in the master plan. I can throw it up. It's a little wordy. So the utility being an enterprise fund is funded through users.
I'm sorry for interrupting Joanna. We're not seeing that slide just yet.
It is, it's not a slide. And I'm a little hesitant. I'll put it up here, but you can tell me if it's too much detail for what, for what we're talking about. Am I showing that table?
You are. Is it possible for you to zoom in just on the table and kind of lose the margin and the, yeah, thank you.
It's also in page, on page 84 of our packet for tonight.
Yes.
And I would like to recommend that we give John a minute or so to come back in since he's the chair.
Sure.
Although Sarah is our able deputy here, but I know John was interested in this as well.
Absolutely. I'm happy to wait.
Thank you. It's also a great opportunity to read this again.
I see John now and I'm promoting him.
I guess I have a question I have, and I'm looking forward to hearing from Joanna. But again, I don't know, like, I don't know if I want to do straw poll or what, and feel free to cut me off, Sarah. But like, is anyone not leaning toward the most comprehensive funding or vision? Like, is anyone going to argue for a lower level?
So I see Mark raising his hand. And if he wants to speak, he should. And I also, I just want to understand it because if we're talking about equity, on the one hand, I mean, I think it's, it's not, it is theoretically, it's a slam dunk for the highest level from an equity perspective. I don't really know. And I think it's just worth thinking through. Mark and then Laura, and then John's back, so I hand the baton back.
Okay, thanks. So it seems like, sure, why not recommend the highest level of funding? My only question, of course, is is what's possible and what, what budgetary trade-offs might be required? It seems like the action level is, it seems like the, okay, it says, as currently approved in the 2022 budget book. So it's in January. Okay, so am I understanding these three levels correctly as bare minimum? One is currently approved, the action level is currently approved. And the vision level is not approved. But you know, many city governments are, and county governments are awash in some federal funds that they don't really vocalize, that they, that they are swimming in, but they have them. And so they're trying to carefully manage the way in which they expend those funds. And so, you know, if we have, obviously, if we have the resources to achieve the vision level, like as Lisa says, you know, pay me now or pay me later, you know, doing infrastructure and maintenance is always a good value, right? I mean, it's almost always a good value if you are protecting life and safety and doing things that you eventually are going to have to do. And so if you can do them, do them earlier and do them well, then great. So anyway, I don't know if staff has any comment on what is actually planned and achieved, planned for now and what is achievable with some of these federal stimulus funds that the city has come into?
Yeah, and I can speak to them at a high level. And I know Vicky kind of dove into the details. For sure, we try to get federal funds where possible. And we also coordinate with the Mile High Flood District, and they contribute to our projects as well. So for example, in Wonderland Creek, we did have federal funding. That was a $30 million project. And I'll have to look up what the component of federal funding is. It is for sure not a panacea, though, even though we, we apply for grants wherever we can, they end up being a relatively small component of the projects that we do do. Doesn't mean that we're not going to keep trying. And I do know that, that we try to maximize those where we can. But I do, I don't want to mislead anybody. There are rates involved in paying for these projects. We do bond for the more expensive ones, just so that there isn't a huge steep increase in rates to ratepayers in any one year. And you're correct, we are currently at the action level of funding. And this has been a ramp up, in part because of the 2013 flood that I mentioned, that 75% increase. I think we've been closer to between an eight and 12 increase. And Vicky can correct me. For the stormwater portion of your bill, I think for the average homeowner, it's about $7 in the monthly bill that it increases, although I'm sure I'm getting that wrong. So maybe, Vicky, you can correct me. But so anyway, we are at the action level. We are recommending the vision level, and that is really driven by pacing. All of these projects are still going to be on the list for evaluation. And we will bring them forward in the CIP. It's just in terms of how, how quickly we can get them done. That's really the main differentiator between the two. But it does have an associated rate increase with it. Vicky, is there anything you want to add? I feel like you really focused on this, Chapter 11 of Volume 2.
Thanks, Joanna. I think maybe just if board members have additional questions. And of course, you know, we got a lot of help from the finance department in looking at this. But again, in $2022, and this won't be lost on you guys, that there's over $350 million of estimated capital improvements. And so the idea and the conversation that we heard from the CWG was very sort of, almost without fail, just a couple folks had a little bit of a different opinion was, well, with this much magnitude, these sorts of improvements that are needed, the sooner the improvements are in the ground or constructed, the sooner the collective city residents benefit. So not, I don't need to retread anything in particular. Just if you guys have specific questions about kind of the, what the dissenting opinions were. I know Joanna, I could speak to that. But almost without fail, people were like, just get on with it. If there are $350 million in improvements in today's dollars, just please accelerate.
Thank you. Laura?
Thank you. First, just a quick clarification. You know, Mark mentioned, are there trade-offs here? Am I understanding correctly that these projects are mostly paid for with people's utilities bills? Utility bills, like it's ratepayers that are paying. It's not like this is coming from the general city budget. And if it doesn't get spent on this, this master plan, it could go to some other department. This is specifically utility bills.
Yes, that's correct. We can only charge for services we provide. And it is all, it's rate-funded unless we get grants and assistance from Mile High or other areas.
Okay, and so then if I'm understanding what Sarah brought up, it's the concern of equity of, you know, this is just every homeowner or, you know, is paying for this and renters are paying for it through their rent increases, presumably. And so I guess my question is whether there is either something in place there is either something in place, or there could be something put in place to offer relief to low income rate payers. And forgive me if I just don't have the background to know if this has already been discussed. Um, but I know, for example, like City Parks Department, they have subsidies for for people who are low income that that uh don't pay the same for the same services.
Yeah, and I thank you for the question, and we absolutely have assistance programs, um particularly since COVID. We've been trying to maximize the county has an emergency rental assistance program that has a utility component to it that we're actively promoting now. There's also a state sponsored um low income housing uh program that does provide utilities assistance as well. Both are available for utility funds. And then um council has approved ARPA funds um for utility bill assistance related to COVID. On a more ongoing basis, we have partnered um with EFA um here locally in town, and there's other programs listed on our website as well that people can tap into. Because we're an enterprise fund and because code says we can't provide free water, there's a little bit of red tape in providing these assistance programs all the time. So it's it's not as straightforward as a mechanism as I think we all ideally would like, but it is available. Um, and we do try to make it as easy as possible for people to access. I feel like I'm forgetting the first part of your question.
No, no, that's okay. I was just trying to understand. So the people who have objections to raising utility bills on equity grounds, it sounds like there is support for low income rate payers.
There is.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know.
Lisa.
Yeah, I mean, I I think the equity question is always a good one, and I appreciate it. I know it briefly appeared on screen, but kind of comparing our rates to um other municipalities, um. I, you know, I I just look at that middle level where it says we're not going to be able to fulfill the CIP for fifty years, and we don't have that kind of time. Um, you know, we, the twenty thirteen floods, we thought were like maybe a hundred year, a thousand year flood, and it looks like they're probably more like a sixty to seventy. Um, you know, it's gonna happen again. So um and climate change is just gonna accelerate all of this. So yeah, I I'm I'm not looking forward to paying a higher water bill. You know, I don't think it's about that. I think we need to keep the focus on equity, but um unfortunately, I think this is sort of like finding out the foundation of your house needs work and like you just have to get it done. Um, you know, so yeah, I'm still for the highest one. Um, again, not because I don't worry about cost and equity. And and again, like costs are going to actually increase for everybody with climate change, but I think uh, you know, penny or a dollar invested today or in the next thirty to thirty-five years is money well spent. Um, I just have a hard time voting for any other level.
Okay. Any further questions regarding the funding? Sarah?
Does um staff have an estimate of including the cost related to CU South of how much the um utility bills will go up? And I I'm asking because it's not just people who are low income. We already have a, we already have a incredibly expensive housing market, and we hear complaints about it all the time for a good reason. And this is just gonna increase that. So I'm just sort of curious if there's a number a a range that you could give us as to if we vote for the obviously, it's still up to council, but if we were to vote for the vision level of funding, what's the approximate range of additional cost per year to a resident, whether a homeowner or a renter?
So I guess to clarify two things. So and I I'm kind of belatedly realizing this, the plan does recommend the current level of or the vision level of funding. So if you all do recommend approval of the plan, that is the level of funding that you would be recommending. That's a kind of an aside. As far as um the South Boulder Creek Project Phase One, there are three phases identified in the South Boulder Creek Mitigation Plan. This is
Sorry, Joanna, I don't
Yeah.
In total, including CU South, not, I'm not asking specifically, I'm in total with the vision level, including CU South, what would be a range of costs? So
So the CU South project is included in that three hundred and fifty million dollars, and it's currently um recommended for approval in our twenty twenty-three budget. So we did just pass a bond that is included in our rates. I think the I would have to look it up. I think it's a Vicky, do you know, is it an eleven percent rate increase that Rab? Let let me look it up that they just approved. Um, so it is already uh a portion of it has been approved for twenty twenty-three. I believe there's also line items in twenty-four and twenty-five.
Yeah, twelve percent. You had it right. Okay.
So eleven per- eleven percent in twenty-three and then possibly
Twelve.
Twenty-four and another twelve percent in twenty-five.
It's, I want, just for clarity, it's been, uh, it was a twelve percent increase in twenty-one, and it has been recommended to stay there until twenty twenty-four. That's just the only thing I have up.
So, Vicky, um, twelve percent increase year over year or a twelve percent increase with no possibility of that being reduced?
So the council uh only, of course, votes on the current year, so it can be reduced. Um. And then I don't have uh, you know, city staff run the financial models in the out years. I just looked at what was publicly available. But yeah, the current model and what's in the current plan that you would be discussing and voting on, uh, it's a, it's a table in that chapter shows past increases of seven percent, and then it's been an average, uh Joanna had that right, and then twelve percent recommended for the next couple of years.
Okay, so it's twelve percent year over year. Okay.
Correct.
And I do believe that um you'll you'll meet Christieville, if you haven't already met him. He's the other deputy director for utilities. I believe he's bringing for the um twenty, the proposed twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight capital improvement program budget for planning board consideration on August sixteenth. And I know he's spoken to specifically the South Boulder Creek Project to Rab and um could include that here as well.
And and just to clarify, that twelve percent year by year goes up twelve percent every year. Um, you said that prior to that, it had been going up seven percent every year, so the twelve percent is approximately a five percent increase off of what had been happening?
Just for clarity, there's a, and I apologize, I can't share my screen, but there's a a figure shown in the document which provides the rate increases back to two thousand and three. Um, and so uh the average, Joanna has it right, the average since twenty uh since two thousand. So it was, so we had the big raise in seventy, of the seventy-five percent increase in two thousand and fifteen, but it's averaged eight percent since then. And then just in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two and beyond, they've been discussing twelve percent increases. If that's more clear.
Yeah, so it's not, I don't, I'm I'm not very good at statistics, but an increase from eight percent to twelve percent isn't a four percent increase, it's a thirty-five percent increase.
Correct, yeah. And then it's not, a- as as a percentage of the original number.
Sorry, I just and look, I'm not opposed. I just wanted us to have a full discussion about what it means to, what it, what the concept, what the potential implications are for the vision level of funding. And I feel like we've had that discussion. Or we've had most of that discussion, not trying to stop the discussion.
Can I just say that that chart that was that Vicky was discussing is on page two hundred and seventy-one of the packet? If people want to go look at it, and I can share screen if folks want to see it.
Well, I I think that would be useful. Why don't you do that?
Okay, let me pull that up real quick.
Thanks, Laura. I'm impressed that you have the page number. I was not that fast on the
Well, I didn't have other other duties to do, so uh here we go.
And while Laura is pulling it up, I guess, too, uh, so many of you have been around for a long time, and you'll recognize immediately those years of the Great Recession where there were zero increases. And of course, that didn't uh, that didn't do a lot to help the utility get sort of money in the bank for future spending.
Can folks see that? Do you need me to make it bigger?
Well, I I think you can see enough to get the point there. Um. I have to say that I I think this is interesting, but it's not complete uh in the sense that we're only talking about increases, whereas I I believe it makes more sense for us to be talking about absolute uh funds available. It uh in terms of how much, how much is available for the utility to work with? Uh, right now, we're, this this chart doesn't tell us that.
So sorry to interject. If you go a couple more pages down, I think from where you are, I I'm
Can you see in the left-hand scroll bar here the pages? Oh, Vicky, we might have lost you.
So I'm probably in volume uh two where the technical, the bigger technical memorandum is, but if you Yep. Thank you, Amy. If you get down to there, that was the uh twenty twenty-two city approved budget that talks to your point, George, about, you know, funds available, total use of funds.
Right. No, I'm I'm looking at that now, table eleven dash two.
Correct.
Uh, and it it seems to me that rather than us focusing on what sort of a percentage increase we should be considering, it makes more sense for us to look at the, at the total funds available. And that's what we're looking at on this table.
I think that that final line, the ending fund balance um after reserves is kind of what convinces me of the need for the funding. And again, I'm I I am by no means excited to raise that people's water bills or have my own raised. Um, but there is a lot that needs to be done. Um, and the consequences of failing to deal with them unfortunately just push the expense down the road um and potentially increase the expense. So.
I think that's the clincher for me is that um you know, it it only takes one of these big events uh for the cost to skyrocket, not just in terms of monetary damages, but you know, damages to people and to their homes and their families and their lives and the disruption that they endure. Um, I think we heard that loud and clear at city council meetings uh and other places uh where the public gives input that we we don't want to see that again. And the only way that we can avoid that is is build better flood mitigation, which is the plan that's in front of us. And I uh completely agree with the folks who are saying, let's accelerate. And I'm I'm not usually like, I don't think of myself as fiscally irresponsible. I think we do have to think very carefully about the expenditures and not putting unnecessary burdens on people. But I do think that accelerating this plan um is very likely to reduce the total expenses that people have to pay over the years and reduce damage to our community in many other ways.
Lisa.
Yeah, one other thing that I think was touched on in there, but I I guess I just want to briefly harp on um is, you know, that I I don't think we do enough um as a city to do the carrot and the stick as far as like water use and, you know, lawns. Um, you know, irrigation, drip irrigation, you know, so on. Uh, there's wonderful nonprofits that I know water um coordinates with. Um, I myself have garden in a box plants out front and, you know, make an effort to do natives and so on. Um, but I I guess I would just say, you know, I would love to see, and I think we need to, especially when I think about what's happening right now with the Colorado River. Um, you know, put more toward how we encourage people to use water differently. And when we're, you know, charging off of that um tiered plan, now I'm blanking on the terminology for it, but we're charging off of the tiered plan and, you know, and and people are suddenly spiking up into those higher ranges. In my opinion, that should automatically trigger a degree of education. Um, you know, and reaching out to people and saying, you know, hey, here are like the five top ways you can do it, and here's who will help you get cheaper plants or help you redo your irrigation or whatever. A lot of it tends to be landscaping. Yeah, so so I would just say, you know, if we're going to start cranking people's water bills up, I think that there's a moral obligation and ethical obligation and an environmental obligation to also help people reduce um what they're paying. Um, and and I appreciate that the way that the bill is structured is intended to do that, but it has to be paired with education.
Well, I I think we should be clear. We're talking about the flood and and stormwater utility here rather than all water use.
This is true. I agree, but but I
This isn't the water bill. This is a a portion of the water bill.
It is, but if the total water bill is going to go up, which will be a result of voting for this higher tier plan, then I think that we have to look at how do we from an equity perspective and fairness perspective, how do we then look at ways that our rate payers can manage the cost of that total bill? You know, because this is an area where they're not going to have a lot of control, where we're going to dictate it to them and say, this is what you shall pay, you know, end of story. Um. And I think that on the area where there is a degree of discretion, that we should be looking for ways to help people make that decision. And some of them won't, and that's fine. They'll just pay higher rates. Um, but I I I do think those things go hand in hand.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, so this this last little bit of discussion is super interesting because if what we're talking about is the methodology of funding and accelerated waste and stormwater infrastructure program is to increase the rates on the bill for waste and stormwater, not for water, then we actually have a bit of a perverse incentive because your waste and stormwater bill is based upon your winter consumption when you're not irrigating or watering your yard. Hence, um, uh, we we actually are saying, okay, we're raising your bill in spite of the fact that you have uh worked very hard to not use summer irrigation, you're not watering your yard, you've zero escaped, etc. Anyway, it's just, it's an interesting point, but am I correct? This is a question, maybe maybe for staff, that the funding required and the increase in the bills that we're talking about is to the waste and stormwater portion of the bill?
Um, partially. So there's, we have, and it's it's confusing. There are three utilities. So there's water, and there's wastewater, and then there's storm and flood. So the twelve percent increase that we're talking about is just to the storm and flood utility. There also are proposed increases for the water and wastewater, um, but they're driven by slightly different capital improvement projects, obviously. Um, so the annual winter consumption that you're talking about, that's such a water budget every year, um, that is specific to water and wastewater, um, does not impact the stormwater. That is tied more to your lot size and impervious area. And I believe it's currently for the average single family residence in Boulder, it's about twenty-two dollars a month for um for flood and storm.
It it it, the 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 stormwater portion is based on something other than usage?
That's right. That's right. It's it's tied, it's tied to your lot characteristics, not your consumption.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies that for me.
And and I just want to point out, though, that for your average person, especially if they maybe got it on auto pay and they're not actually getting a paper bill, the impact to the rate payer is just, oh, I'm paying more money, you know. So I think it's important for us to understand the ins and outs of like what's funding that and what's going up, and how does that feed in? Um. But when we think of the impacts to whoever's paying that water bill, whether they're a renter or an owner or whatever, um, what they experience is just more money going out the door. Um, you know, and and that's why I was talking about, you know, like, I think that there's an obligation, even if right now we're talking about stormwater, you know, and floods and so on, but like to just think about, okay, how does this impact the overall bill and where and how can we support people in managing that, you know, resource and also in a responsible way?
Yeah, I I I think you're making excellent points. I I think we should also be aware that we're being asked to make a a financial recommendation here without full knowledge of other aspects of the other utilities that will be coming with their requests and also other departments in the city, which will be coming with their budget concerns and issues. But that being said, That being said, I, I don't believe it's our role to make the determination of, of how. Of, of how this should be considered be to be other city needs. I think we are being asked right now just to look at the flood and stormwater utility. And to try and identify what it need, what we think, what resources we would like to see go there. To that utility, uh, and then of course, city council will ultimately make the decision about. Whether they agree with us and with presumably a better knowledge of other needs that the city may have. And other needs that this, this uh utility may have, that, that we are not informed about.
Sarah. Yeah, John, I, I agree, and the reason I brought it up originally initially. Was because the RAB language spec- specifies the highest level of funding. And the proposed recommendation that staff has written up for us did not, it didn't specify any level of funding. So I thought that the discrepancy between the two was worth uh in a conversation, which I think has been interesting and. Mostly illuminating and, and chat in a re- reflection of the challenges. That city council will have to um deal with.
Right.
So that's, that's why I brought up it, because there was just a, the two late, the two motions were not the same.
No, I, I think that's absolutely appropriate that you brought it up. But I, I, I can say that I don't, I don't hesitate to support the, the vision level of funding. Because I, but I'm not thinking about what other needs for funding there are. But we're not being asked to in this venue as in, in my perception. ML.
Thank you, John, um, I, um, Joanna, I think I understood what you said about this stormwater. Rate is determined on the nature of the property, the amount of pervious ground. I, I think that that um, I think that that factor. Would be important to start getting out there to people somehow. I agree with Lisa, that if people know that they can make a change, they can do something. Because why put in more paving, why pave your patio, why do these things, these are decisions that people make about their own property. Not realize that a consequence is out there, not just to how our water is retained locally on site, but. To their rate on their um stormwater line item, so. I think it would be kind of nice to start sort of shining a light on places where people can take action. That um. They may not know that they, that, that it has repercussions. So a- anyway, I, I appreciate. The more conversation we have, the more uh learning I get, so I appreciate um that amount of information. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing it, we do have an engagement and outreach program manager that for sure focuses on all these utilities, so that's great feedback and we can. We can incorporate that into our outreach efforts.
George.
Yeah, sorry, I, I'm sorry, I'm not on video any longer, I've had, I've had some real connectivity issues, um, but I've been on the phone the whole time. Um, uh, uh, I, I, I think, John, you summarized it for me well, which was. Uh, listen, I, I don't know why we wouldn't support the maximum, but to a certain extent, from a financial ramifications. It, I, I think it really goes to council related to sort of what are the puts and takes and, and how do you balance this all to the taxpayer? And, and make the right decisions around that, and I don't think, at least I'm not informed enough to, to make that call, so I don't know why we wouldn't. Support the maximum, uh, but again, I, I, it, it's a from a pretty uninformed view relative to what the taxpayer. Is actually burdened with uh from a holistic level.
Welcome to the planning board with uh where you get complete information on everything you need. Um, okay. Well. Oh, Laura. You're, you're muted, Laura. Still muted.
Sorry, too many mute buttons like this one and that one, and okay, I think you may have been about to ask if anybody wanted to make a motion. And if discussion is wrapping up.
Yes, unless people have other things they'd like to discuss, but uh I would invite a motion.
I'm happy to make it, and my understanding from Joanna and from the, I, I did not actually read every page of this. Um, it was a lot, but from what I was able to read uh and look through. My understanding is that this plan itself does recommend the vision level of funding, so when we recommend. That city council uh accept and adopt this plan, um, we are recommending the vision level of funding, so with that in mind. I move to recommend to city council acceptance of the comprehensive flood and stormwater master plan. And approval of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Flood and Stormwater Master Plan Summary.
Very good, do we have a second?
I'd like to second that.
Okay, ML seconds, discussion? All right, I'll call a vote, uh, Sarah.
Yep.
Mark?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Lisa?
Hi.
And I supported also. So unanimous uh support.
Oh, wait, wait, John, you didn't call me.
George, I'm actually your.
Yeah, no problem, I, I know you don't see my face there, um. I, I'm gonna abstain, um, and I, I, I believe recommending it is the right call from my perspective. But again, I, I think we have really incomplete information as it rela- as it is relative to. Um, what the taxpayers are burdened with overall, and I don't know whether this is the right call. Um, so it's, it's very difficult to, to make that kind of recommendation. Without, without understanding the depth of that information, so I'd leave that to council.
Um, I don't think we're allowed to abstain, that's my recollection from a, is that correct, hello, we either have to vote yes or no?
That's correct, um, and I was just looking it up, so the code states, if a member of a board is present at a meeting and refuses to vote. The member's call shall be recorded in the affirmative, so it would automatically result in an affirmative vote.
That's fine. It's fine.
Don't give us that option, unfortunately.
George is abstain, yes.
And I'm an abstain, yes, exactly.
All right, you, you get it both ways, uh, congratulations on that. Okay, well, thank you very much, Joanna.
Likewise, thank you for your time, support, I appreciate it.
Hey, I, I, I actually, sorry, um, I have a motion I'd like to make.
Okay.
And before Joanna leaves, so this is, I, I waited until. The primary motion was done, and so I, I have a separate motion. I'd like to uh speak to for a moment, so if that's okay.
Well.
Okay, um, so uh having served on the Greenways Advisory Committee for a couple of years. And uh, and not serving this year, but in the prior two years. Um, I, I've become really aware of the. Uh, unguided sort of mishmash way in which our greenways are managed and underfunded. And, and the fact that I'm bringing it up under uh this area. This, this adoption of this master plan. Um, may be the wrong spot, but the fact that this is the. This is kind of maybe the only place to do it, to actually have some effect. Um, uh, speaks to the fact that our greenways have been. Uh, the responsibility for our greenways are, are spread across multiple departments. With a particular lack of responsibility, whether it's. Uh, the water in the creek, the sidewalk next to the, next to the creek, the green space to the left of that. Um, how all this is managed is, is really a, a bit of a, a mishmash, and, and the city has. Um, uh, different departments have tried to tackle this. But have been, in, in my view, kind of ineffective, because there is not a point of contact, there is not a position of responsibility. Or a department that, whether it's a citizen or another department can go to and, and be. Um. Informed and talk to someone who's, who's informed about our greenways, and I think our greenways are. Just as much, if not more, a part of Boulder's identity as the downtown mall, as N car. Um, uh, these other assets, and yet we, we treat these particular assets. Uh, in a, in an entirely different fashion. Uh, and our greenways bring together the Parks and Rec Department, which is part of the Greenways Advisory Committee. Planning, transportation, it encompasses our climate goals, our safe routes to schools, Vision Zero, flood control. Homelessness, encampments, safety of housed and unhoused citizens. Uh, mobility and access for our disabled uh residents, uh equity and recreation access. Um, so, and connection to our open space and mountain parks. Um, so they, they are to me a really priceless community asset, so the motion, and again, I, I. I mean, I got a second, I may, whatever here, but I've gotta put this out there. Uh, the motion I'm going to make that would be uh. Conveyed to council along with our recommendations on the, um, on the, on the master plan that we uh have recommended adoption of. Would go like this. The planning board recommends that the city council direct the city manager. To create a permanent director level position of responsibility to manage our greenways. That's the end of the motion, so I, I have lots of other longer sorts of things, but to me, the, the, the key element is. A lack of uh responsible and accountable staff. Um, for management of our greenways. I'm happy to email or send it to Amanda, uh, and that's, that's.
Let's, let's, uh, let's talk about it, I see Sarah has her hand up, and I'm sure others will have thoughts also.
Mark, I think the idea is an interesting one, I'm not sure this is the right way to let, to legislate. And maybe a recommendation that says something like, we'd like city council to direct, to direct. The city manager to explore the possibility of, because this is a budget item and making legislation based on. Your feelings or my feelings or ML's feelings is probably not the right way to go about it. That, so that's my one recommendation is that you add the language that says to e- e- explore the possibility of.
Okay, no.
I, I.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I also have a, a thought here, and that is, I, I don't disagree with, uh, with anything Mark has come with. Except I, I'm not sure it's a director level type position, that's, that's the kind of a decision that a city manager can decide. What level is appropriate, seems to me. Laura?
I, I don't have any background on this issue, and, and I would wonder, and maybe some of the staff who are still present on the meeting. Uh, could let us know if there is, if this is something that has been considered or is in the works already. Um, rather than us shooting from the hip without, without that information. And, and Mark, maybe you have that background and maybe you know, but I don't.
Mr. Mueller is showing up here, he may have some thoughts for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and I feel a little uncomfortable venturing into this space as the new kid on the block. Uh, I appreciate the. Uh, insights and the. Uh, passion towards attention on that. I, I would say, just given my experience um through my career, but also efforts that I've heard between the city manager and council. In terms of uh defining roles, uh, this council seems very responsive to the. Um, council manager form of government that would really speak to the idea that. Operational decisions are, are really the responsibility of the city manager, uh, which is allocation of resources and positions. And, and things like that, but that the budget itself and the policy behind that is really the purview of this city, so I think. Um, i- if I were to try to read council's mind, which is a little dangerous, of course, um. Out of respect for their differing opinions and, and approaches, but I think that they would um, you know. Rather take this conversation in the spirit of greenways need a specific focus and, and a. Um. Uh, maybe higher level of focus, those are both kind of policy perspectives, but the how of doing it. Uh, they would probably feel uncomfortable about uh discussing on the dais and rather leave that to the administrative function of the city manager's office. So I don't know where that leaves you in terms of emotion, uh, I can. Uh, certainly represent that this discussion is well documented through the minutes here and. Uh, certainly heard by those of us um in the leadership circle to make sure that we bring that message forward. Uh, through our conversations uh leading up to the budget and CIP and, and future things. But certainly respect the planning commission, the planning boards, um. Um, a- approach and, and I think either refine whether it's a motion or just recognizing some of the discussion that's happened today.
So I just wanted, could I respond for just a, a minute, because I, I, I really appreciate all the, all the feedback. Uh, from Sarah and Brad and, and, and uh everyone, and I, and again, I, I, I do think it is. Uh, we're, we're treading into, you know, unknown, slightly unknown territory here. And, and, but the reason I wanted a motion rather than just comments in minutes. Is that I think that a, a sentence that has been adopted by a board. Um, with a vote holds mu- much more. Um. Sway than just making comments in minutes, because I, I, I know that, you know, gee. I, I, I read our minutes, but you know, council has, has a lot of minutes to, to read. And uh, so I would encourage us. Uh, that, that a motion uh carries much more weight than just comments and minutes. I also want to say that in, in the two years that I was on the Greenways Advisory Committee, and just for those that, that, that don't know. The Greenways Advisory Committee meets once a year, that's it. Uh, the budget for greenways specifically, and, and again, I, I, I'm ready to be corrected on this. My understanding from the meetings I've attended is somewhere less than three hundred thousand dollars, and, and we have not had. Uh, staff tonight talked about a two-year interim position. Uh, of, of some sort of coordinator level, but really, there is this, there is this, um. Wide gray area associated with our greenways that is it OSMP, is it transportation? Whose job is it, you know, who maintains it, whose jurisdiction it is? And so my goal is not to create an, another staff position, my goal is simply to create. Uh, accountability, responsibility of. For our greenways, which are an asset, and when you think about the asset of our greenways in comparison to the downtown mall. And the downtown mall commission and their budgets and their revenues and their staff, I mean, it's, it's really a stunning. Um, lack of administration in comparison to our other, our other assets, so I'm, I'm totally. Uh, willing to wordsmith a motion that would convey. Uh, our, our board's. Desire for greater accountability and responsibility. desire for greater accountability and responsibility and clarity in management of our greenways.
Lisa?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to voice this in a way that clearly expresses what I mean, but hopefully isn't overly harsh. I completely support the greenways. I agree with a lot of what you just brought forward, Mark. I personally would not support it as a motion, not because I don't support what you're saying, but I, I don't think. I'm concerned that getting in the habit of bringing forward motions, and I'm not saying you're in the habit, but the board at large, or maybe even me, for things that we each are particularly excited about or, or, or think something should be done for, isn't really the role of the Planning Board. And, and I think it makes meetings longer also, which I have a pet annoyance with, but, um, yeah, so, so I, I agree with everything you've written. I, I wouldn't vote in support of, of a motion. Just because I don't think it's appropriate, like I, I don't think that's an appropriate motion for us to bring forward as a board. But other people may vote for it and it may pass anyway. And everything you've said, I think are excellent points. I agree too. The greenways program needs more attention. I also hear what staff said about perhaps us not getting too specific on it, although I also appreciate why you want to get very specific on it and that that is a stronger motion. But yeah, I just, I don't know. I, I could bring a lot of motions for it and a lot of stuff. And I'm not sure I see it as something we should be doing on, on something of this level.
Okay, I, I just missed Lisa's comments here. Can you?
As being mean. I was, I was appreciating.
One, one, you, one, I, I am, it's tough to hurt my feelings. I appreciate direct, this is direct communication. I'm not comfortable with this. I think this is wrong, whatever. I, I appreciate that. And believe me, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty thick skinned, so I, I didn't find anything that you said to be anything other than enlightening.
Good. I'm glad because I, I don't actually disagree with a lot of what you're saying. So John, let me try to be briefer and maybe someone else can speak up after I finish if, if they feel I haven't accurately conveyed in brief what I said. So basically I just said that I, I appreciated what Mark brought forward, that I agree with him, but greenways needing more attention and investment. But I also agree with what staff said about maybe not getting super specific on how we would fund it. And that just in general, as far as not, not even necessarily specific to, to this particular thing that Mark brought forward, but that I'm, I would not vote for it simply because I'm not sure it rises to a level of emotion and it seems a little bit off agenda. And I have concerns about us getting in the habit. And I'm not saying we're in one, and I'm not saying that I don't want to do it too, of kind of bringing forward individual things that we are particularly excited about and started bringing those into motion language. So I just said that I would be voting against it, but not because I necessarily disagree with anything Mark said. I just, I don't think it needs to be a motion.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Laura?
Thank you. I also appreciate where Mark is coming from about stressing the importance of greenways and having some coherence and responsibility. And Mark, I think you phrased it quite beautifully and much, did a much better job at that than I'm doing. I agree with Lisa that I, I'm not sure that this is a, a motion that we should be making tonight. For one thing, I don't feel educated enough about it to, to say one way or the other of what should happen. I do appreciate the perspective that Brad brought in, our new Planning Director, that, you know, he's listening, staff are listening. When Planning Board speaks about something like this, you know, staff are paying attention and I think they already know that greenways need more coherence and that that's something that they're wanting to work on. Now where that falls in their work plan and their other priorities, that is a much larger discussion. And I think that's one of the reasons why I'd be hesitant to weigh in more strongly here tonight. A suggestion was made, I think by Sarah previously, that when we do see these issues, these are the kinds of things that we can roll into our, our letter to council, like a year-end letter to council, rather than trying to make individual motions as we go along. And I would certainly be supportive of, of, you know, thinking about it in that manner.
Sarah?
I, I agree with Lisa and Laura.
Uh, that was succinct. George?
You too. Uh, I'd like to move on and.
So. All right, George, are you still there?
I'm still here.
Oh, so you'd like to move on, meaning you don't want.
I, I, I hear, I hear a lot of people just wanting to move on. So I, I'll leave it to Mark. Are, are we, are we trying to move something forward? Or are we, are we moving on to another topic?
Well, okay, since we operate under Robert's rules, then and again, I'm not the chair here. I have put a motion out. I'm willing to, and, and in fact have revised the motion on the fly. However, I can also read a room. And so I would, here's what I would propose. I'll read my revised motion. And anyone who it might change their vote on a motion can say so. And if no one says so, then we don't need to take a vote because it's obvious the motion would fail or it wouldn't have a second. But we do operate under Robert's rules. And so just moving on, when there's a motion on the floor, I don't think is procedurally correct.
Okay, Mark?
Yes, I, what I meant by moving on is let's just speed it up and get going because I think we, we all have other things we want to do. So please make your motion and let's, let's go for it.
My revised motion is the Planning Board requests that City Council recommend that the City Manager create a permanent position of responsibility to manage our greenways.
Okay, is there a second for Mark's motion? Okay, I, I think.
Motion does.
Okay, it ends there. All right, and we shall move on. And let's see, I think we can also say thank you to Joanna and Vicky and Amy Murdock, since we are now finished with what they were helping us with. So thank you.
Thank you. Likewise, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. So now we can move into matters on the amps, matters from staff on the amps project.
Good evening, City Council. Chris Jones here, interim Director of Community Vitality. We're shifting gears a little bit on your evening. I'm wanting to be here tonight to introduce you to Sam Bromberg. She is our project manager in charge of access coordination. For those of you that have been involved in the amps work for some time, you'll recall last year I came to you with Chris Haglen. We had a number of recommendations and steps that we were taking beginning this year related to parking and access, including changes to on-street parking and also some recommendations around changes to residential access management. And one of those recommendations was to hire a person to be our champion of all of the, the strategies that City Council and you all supported last year. And Sam is our champion. And she has been hard at work. We wanted to check in with you all and all of our boards and commissions, let you know that, that we didn't stop work with just raising rates on the street at the beginning of the year and some of the other changes. But we've been continuing with the work that we said we were going to do. I know that we had a lengthy information item, but we also, just to get you all up to speed on what, what we've been up to this year. But also wanted to provide some time, some face time to again, introduce you to Sam and provide an opportunity, if you had questions that came up based on the information item, to, to ask those questions of Sam as she's working towards developing the full recommendations for dynamic pricing or, or performance-based on-street pricing that we're pursuing next year, as well as the residential access management program that she's developing. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Sam to lead you through just a few slides, some high-level information. If you didn't have a chance to dive into the meaty packet, she'll provide you a quick overview of what she's been up to as we move forward in the next steps.
Very good and welcome, Sam.
Thank you, John, and thanks, Chris, for the introduction. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Hopefully this works. Can everybody see it? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. So as Chris said, my name's Samantha Bromberg. I'm a project manager with Community Vitality. I'm here to update Planning Board on several of the amps initiatives, provide some background and otherwise prepare Planning Board for the fall when we are going to return with specific implementation recommendations for which we'll be soliciting feedback at that time. So just a high-level overview of what amps is. Amps, the Access Management and Parking Strategy, was developed as a guide through which city staff, leadership boards, commissions, and the community at large can work towards improving Boulder's approach to multimodal access and parking management across the city and within special districts. Amps guiding principles are provide transportation, provide for all transportation modes, customize tools by area, support a diversity of people, seek solutions with co-benefits, plan for the present and future, and cultivate partnerships. This graphic provides examples of the variety of projects underway under the amps program umbrella. So we'll be talking about parking pricing strategy and residential access management. But this just gives you the idea of everything that's going on and some of the future apps initiatives as well. So in 2021, Community Vitality staff went to council with a number of recommended program implementations in line with the amps guiding principle. And with council support in 2022, we introduced a couple of changes. So to set the stage for implementing performance-based pricing, which involves variable on-street pricing based on demand, we increased all on-street parking rates by 25 cents per hour. And at the same time, off-street parking was maintained at $1.25 per hour. And we eliminated tiered pricing and implemented a maximum daily rate of $15 for stays longer than six hours. To increase safety and compliance for users of the right-of-way, we implemented graduated and safety mobility fines. So we increased base fines for many parking violations and introduced graduated fines for repeat violations and mobility safety fines, which are higher fines for violations that create unsafe conditions for other travelers. And neighborhood parking permits were increased by $10 for residents and $20 for commuters with the goal of achieving cost recovery for the program in a few years. Lastly, over the course of this year, we've also been working on introducing a discount for income-qualified residents on the neighborhood parking permit that was in the City Manager rule that we've revised that was included in the packet in tonight's Planning Board packet. And we've also been working on mounting a robust data collection program to study parking occupancy in Boulder's residential neighborhoods. So here's our 2023 Amps roadmap. So under the Residential Access Management Program, we'll continue to increase permit pricing in the hopes of eventually achieving cost recovery, as I mentioned. And also we'll be implementing that discount program, which I also mentioned. We'll be continuing to study zones and recommending areas of expansion or new areas that qualify based on the occupancy data that we're collecting. Performance-based pricing will be fully implemented, which will include variable pricing by block face based on demand. And we will be recommending the implementation of a trailhead access management work group under which OSMP Transportation and Mobility and Community Vitality staff will study residential areas near OSMP trails and access points with observed parking spill-over to determine an approach to mitigate that spill-over and utilize transportation demand management strategies to encourage travel beyond the personal vehicle to those destinations. So some of our program goals are to recognize the value of the right-of-way by using parking utilization data to inform program decision-making, to respond to user behaviors and the diversity of their needs, to generate revenue needed to achieve and maintain cost recovery and support evolving community needs, to achieve transparency and predictability, to create a more equitable system, promote effective parking management and customer compliance, advance climate and sustainability goals by supporting travel choice beyond the personal vehicle, and increase quality of life benefits for everyone who lives in and frequents Boulder. Next steps for us include continuing our data collection and analysis. We'll be coming back to you this fall with final recommendations for implementations, including which blocks we are singling out for price increases under performance-based pricing and the occupancy results that we're finding of our study of residential areas under ramp. And then we'll also be finalizing a communications plan for all of the changes that we are hoping are supported by council this fall. So we're ready to inform the public of any changes that occur. And hopefully you're all still awake. And
Oh, yeah.
I think, ready. That was really quick. So if anyone has questions, now's a good time.
Thank you, Sam. I'm going to chime in real quick before we get to Planning Board members. Just want to thank you for your hard work on this. And again, this is just a, we really wanted to do kind of a primer. You know, we have several new Planning Board members who haven't been necessarily part of the conversation over the past several years. And Mark, you were involved, of course, in, on the tab. But, and you've, and you've been involved in amps and, and in many ways over the years. So I know many of you are familiar, but some of you are not. So just wanted to, to get you all primed and, and to get the conversation rolling with the big conversation plan for this fall, where we'll have some specific recommendations that will be seeking your approval and, and support as, as we then go on to council in anticipation of, of their support for 2023.
Okay, I see ML has her hand up.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Sam, for putting together that lovely and concise little update. So the question I have, and I didn't see on the slides, I, I saw it on the roadmap, but it, there wasn't really a timing. So I don't know what the timeline is, but, um, trailheads. So I'm sure the public has weighed in on trailheads, locals versus visitors. Um, is there, I know that at Flagstaff or on certain areas by your license plate, you either didn't have to pay or you had to pay if you were a visitor. So what I'm curious about, and I guess this is a question as much as anything, is is there thinking regarding trailhead access and parking that acknowledges the locals, the people who actually paid for these versus the visitors who COVID just like overwhelmed, right? Every trailhead we knew about and they were not, the percentage of locals was the minority. So I think it makes it difficult for those of us who, you know, have lived here for decades and decades to not be able to get on our trails. So the question is, if, if, did you hear the question? It's a question, is the thinking about how to accommodate the visitor versus the locals, is it on the table in regards to, you know, like Chautauqua, like areas where there is parking, already a parking requirement or how, how does that work? Because it's, I'm sure, this isn't the first time you've heard it.
Sure. And maybe I'll just clarify that first and foremost, the role of Community Vitality is to manage parking in residential areas. And so we're only considering part managed parking inside of city limits. That's as far as our our areas of. our areas of responsibility go. And so we're talking about areas like Chautauqua that do have managed parking. And what we're proposing is that we put together a team that is cross-departmental, but led by Community Vitality under the umbrella of Ramp to study more areas that might qualify for similar types of management and together come up with eloquent solutions that work both for the community and for visitors, so that we can manage access and make sure that we're mitigating the effects of spill over. So we're managing parking and we're also providing alternative access means for people to visit those areas at the same time. And so, yes, I think there is, there is thought about how we can make sure that we're able to allow, you know, residential visitation to those areas and how that works in the broader picture of what is Residential Access Management Program or Ramp.
So thank you, Sam. And just in short, yes, it's not off the table to have some sort of management practice in our neighborhoods where residents who have purchased an annual residential permit or somehow have demonstrated that they, you know, through their license plate are actual city of Boulder residents might have a different access experience than folks who are coming in from outside of Boulder. It's not off the table. But as Sam suggested, we're not tackling that in in its entirety next year. But we're assembling this trailhead access management work group that will work toward prioritizing and implementing on a case-by-case basis, really wanting to learn and it's the, we have camp as an example of one approach, and we want to learn from that. A five-year pilot, we anticipate that that will continue. And we'll want to explore similar strategies in other neighborhoods where we have trailheads that are impacting people's residential parking.
So my understanding that trailheads was on your little map, right? It's down the road. It's not something that you are doing right now. It will, you're putting together a working group and you're gathering information on how and where these areas might be managed. Is that correct?
Yeah. So this year, 2022, we're collecting data to understand whether there is spill over for certain areas that have been identified by staff. OSMP staff in particular have inputted the locations that they believe might be impacted based on data that they've collected. And so we're studying those areas to see whether that's true. Is there parking spill over in the neighborhoods? And then we'll be prioritizing those areas based on the intensity of the spill over, based on the intensity of the problem. And so what the team next year will do is say, okay, we know that these areas are on our study plan, or this area is the most impacted. What what are the boundaries of those impacts? What can we propose for parking mitigation strategies? And what can we propose for TDM strategies? And then go back to boards, commissions, and council with those recommended strategies for implementation the following year. Does that answer the question?
It does. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you. I think we'll be looking.
I see Mark's hand. I see Mark's hand.
Oh, Mark, go ahead.
Chris and Samantha, Samantha, thank you for joining the team and tackling what is a troublesome area, not just for Boulder, but just all over the world, right? Parking cars, it's a, it's a huge, it's a huge thing. My question is, is given our climate crisis, our goals of mode shifting and other goals within the TM Transportation Master Plan, are the rate increases that you would, that were adopted by council and that other, other, other people had advocated for higher rates? But is the goal of cost recovery really enough, given in light of everything, light of the world we live in today? We just had a presentation by a department who operates and is in charge of life and safety in our waste and storm waters and, you know, is looking at at raising rates significantly on users to fulfill their, to fill their, their mission. So my question is, is that if we don't, if we are not engaging in cost recovery now and aspiring to go beyond cost recovering, are we not subsidizing parking and subsidizing automobile usage?
Certainly a good question. As Sam, you're welcome to take a shot at responding, and I can chime in as well.
Yeah, I know. I was going to suggest if you have thoughts, Chris, you're, you're usually much more eloquent than I am about.
And Chris has heard this question before from me. So anyway.
Well, so I would say so our cost recovery intention is related to just our general city council policy related to this type of program. But the costs associated with the program could evolve over time, and this is something that Sam is looking into and something we've talked about, something like a transportation wallet. So if the, it is possible that our neighborhood program could get more expensive over time because we start including some carrots, additional carrots, instead of just having a permit program for people to be able to park their cars. The permit actually covers other TDM benefits, but it's more expensive. And so that's partially kind of why we're calling it ramp is neighborhoods that want to petition in at different levels might have different levels of of programmatic elements that have different costs. And so the intent would be certainly in cost recovery of our existing program. We know what that is, but the the future program, if we want to explore including TDM tools that are going to be more expensive to pursue other goals of the city, then obviously the price of the permit would need to go up in order to cover those additional expenses. So cost recovery would still be a big part of the equation. But the overall cost of the program isn't just about managing the number of cars on the street. It's about managing access in residential areas. And that's, those are two different conversations. And so that's why we've kind of changed the focus from just around managing the number of cars parked on somebody's street and more about developing a program that communities that want to participate, neighborhoods that want to participate in a more diverse number of options, they'll have a different rate that they'll need to pay for that benefit.
All right, thanks. I'll still say a subsidy is a subsidy. If you're not recovering your costs, you're subsidizing and encouraging it. Thanks.
I can just, as someone who lives in a neighborhood where the on-street parking is shared with city workers and tourists and evening goers and everyone else, and we don't have driveways the way you might, you might mark. I think that it's not all about trying to limit the number of cars driving on our roads. There's a lot of other needs that have to be, or needs that have to be juggled.
Sure. And to your point, and I, I, yeah, I do have a driveway. I don't live downtown. And so we live in different places. But to your point, that if in fact you are struggling to find a parking space because we are subsidizing or underpricing parking, then whether it's for tourists or we don't provide transit strategies for city workers or we choose not to have e-bikes subsidies like Denver and Longmont. These are decisions that end up subsidizing parking for whomever, making it making your life more difficult where you are because we are encouraging and subsidizing parking.
Okay, this can lead to a nice philosophical discussion here. So, well, thank you. And we'll look forward to seeing you again in this fall with more detail.
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you for letting us know about this. Okay. That brings us to almost the end of our meeting. We, we can talk, have some matters from staff and matters from from the board. So Brad, matters from staff?
Well, good evening again. And as I often like to report, thank you so much again for your public service, out of respect for the time. I do want to recognize that and and offer quickly three things. First of all, I've had the pleasure of being able to speak at some length with several of you at this point. Others, we've been playing a little bit of phone tag, which is fine and normal, and others are still on the list. So thank you for your patience in that regard, but it's been good to start to get to know each of you individually. And thank you for spending some time with me in that context. Second thing I wanted to share with you was our service hub. There may have been discussion about this before I started, so if I'm repeating, I apologize, but I did want to advise the planning board that a couple of months ago, we offered a walk-up in-person service hub in the New Britain Building. It shared somewhat with Housing and Human Services, but staffed mostly by Planning and Development Services staff with limited hours Monday through Friday. This is really us being true to our DEI values here at the city of diversity, equity, and inclusion, recognizing that not everybody may have access to a computer. Folks may want answers to questions in person, this type of thing as well. We are still fully committed to our virtual processing and the input, and in fact, are very much encouraging people still in that way, both because that is the way of the world, that things are moving, and also because it does have the promise of some efficiencies for us. So excited as we've kind of rolled that out. It's a much different version than the historic service counter from decades long that ended a couple of years ago, right? Prior to the pandemic, but still a nod towards that in-person service. And I will jump on or add to that, that the citywide staff is now going to be coming into office a minimum of two days a week per direction from the city manager on August 22. And that'll be our first real test as a city to the hybrid work environment that's been anticipated for some time and prepared for for some time. And we are fully confident will work and be the balance of providing both for some in-person interaction while at the same time respecting the reality that we can do a lot of work remote in teams, and folks have really risen to that ability over the last couple of years, and we want to honor that in attracting and maintaining the staff we have to that we, that we do have rather. And then finally, I wanted to see if we knew anything more about the retreat. So maybe, Amanda, if you've got an update in that regard. And then that concludes my comments. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Amanda, maybe you can respond to that. I know that's on our list of things to talk about tonight.
Sure. And we have all of you here present. So I apologize that we haven't landed on a date. It seems as though, you know, I heard from some of you that we're okay with moving forward without Mark at the meeting, but it seems like there's some other opinions, including from staff too, of just wanting to have the whole entire board present. And so wondering if the last week of September, if all of you are maybe around and available, it seems like we would have all of our staff, including.
I'm sorry, this last, the last week of September is the beginning of the Jewish holidays.
Oh, I did not catch that.
When do the High Holidays start, Sarah? On High Holiday?
Start Monday night.
Monday night.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Will you be prepping? I assume Monday's out as well, then?
Monday and Tuesday are both out.
Okay.
For me at least.
Sorry, Sarah, I did not catch that on the calendar.
Is Sarah, are daytime hours out as well as evening hours just the week? Is that correct?
Well, they're definitely out for Monday and Tuesday. And because we don't meet in person, I may very well be going to visit to be with family. So and then it depends on when we decide to do it. So plus I have work like everybody else does here during the day. It's a little hard to, you know. So.
Um, did you, are there any other dates, Amanda? I know you just mentioned the end of September, when you checked staff calendars and the moderator or trainer or whatever he is, did she offer any other dates past the end of September or even prior? What are, what else are we looking at?
You know, we didn't go further. We didn't go into October. And the last conversation we had was regarding the week of the 12th. I think that we avoided the week of the 19th because there is a board meeting scheduled on the 20th. But
I would say that just because we have, I mean, I'd maybe prefer it not to be on the same day. But I think just because we have a board meeting during the week doesn't, wouldn't preclude me from considering it. So looking at the week of the 19th, just with planning board members and staff who are present, how does that week look for people?
Is is Maura available that week? Maura, I'm sorry, is Maura available?
And I'm thinking we may not know the answer to that, Sarah, but I'm wondering if we just look at that weekend on the first of October and at least say that tentatively planning board's available, and then Amanda can go back.
I'm guessing she would have some availability because she had quite a bit in September in general, but I'd have to verify for sure.
Mark, you can do it then?
I can. Just any, starting the 19th on, I'm available.
And I would, it looks like I would be able to do the 19th, 20th, 21st, or 22nd with a preference not to do it the 20th, just because we do have planning board that night.
I have two day-long meetings on the 21st and the 22nd.
So maybe Monday, the 19th?
Or Friday, the 23rd.
Yeah, Friday is a little harder for me, but I would try to make it work if that was the time that worked.
I can do either.
Either the 19th or 23rd, Laura? Can anyone on planning board, Georgie, anyone else? Can anyone not do the 19th or 23rd?
I'm probably good on those days.
Speak now, ML, anyone else?
I see there's a, an agenda meeting for 9:00 AM that on the 19th, but I presume that'll be fiddled around, so.
19th and 23rd.
Correct.
Are okay by me as well. I had my thumb up, but it was vanishing into the background.
Oh, I see. Thank you, ML. Okay, so we've got the 19th and 23rd. I'm just going to preemptively look out to the week of the 3rd of October. I want to offer those dates up to with a strong preference for the September date, Amanda, if 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 our facilitator can be present, but I'd like us to look to that week while we're all in this meeting. The week of the 3rd.
So the night of the 4th and the 5th are as Yom Kippur.
Is Yom Kippur. So let's avoid. So do you need any time around that, Sarah, or just avoid the 4th and 5th?
The 4th and the 5th would not be available.
Right. But do you need the 3rd or the 6th?
No.
Cool. So for other planning board members, 3rd, 6th, 7th of October, how do those dates look?
Flexible.
I, you know, I can do things Monday and Fridays, any other day of the week.
Is hard. Okay, so.
Yeah.
Third and the seventh. Anyone have a conflict with the third or seventh of October?
I mean, I I I may, I I'm looking at work travel too, so it's, you know, I I just don't know right now. It's a little far out for me. I got a bunch of.
Okay, so Georgie's potential, would it be either day for work travel, Georgie, or would it be more Friday?
Yeah, mostly the whole week.
Yeah, because it kind of runs into the weekend. Yeah. Okay, so Georgie's a maybe, September would be better for him.
I I can, I can try to, you know, I don't want to be the person that hangs us up. I prefer September because I just, I know that I'm available.
Okay, Amanda, does that give you what you need to go back to our facilitator and staff?
Thank you. I will. Check on the nineteenth and the twenty-third of September as the preference and then move into October.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Nice work, Lisa.
Yeah.
Hurting, hurting.
Okay, so ML had a had a question for us all that you wanted to bring up also.
I do, and this is like the right time of night to be doing it. So I am going to put out there that maybe we should consider have starting our meetings earlier. As a way to. You know, I know that for those of us who work, switching to Tuesdays was like. You, I I don't know what the full implications are, but I I think it's a it's harder. To imagine long nights on a Tuesday night than it was on a Thursday night. And I'm wondering if the board would be interested in considering an earlier start. I've been attending the Boulder County Planning Commission meetings, and they start at four. And it's really quite civilized. It's really nice to. Anyway, so I'm just putting that out there. If if we want to try to look at starting our meetings earlier. Which could help alleviate some of the late night.
I'll I'll put it out there first. I know I can't. Six o'clock is as early as I can possibly start. I I strained to get here on six, but all the things I've got going on during the day for work. And my kids and everything, it's just, it's not possible for me.
I see Brad has his hand up there.
Well, I I was going to encourage. That to possibly be just kind of sitting out there for contemplation until future conversation. Maybe it's. Maybe it's dead in light of George's comments, but I will say that. I've worked in many jurisdictions where there have been midday kind of. Meetings or ones that straddle the professional workday with the. Alternate workday and again, alluding to some of our diversity and inclusion goals. Recognizing not everybody works a nine-to-five job. It it allows for the evenings, but but conversely, you know, there are folks that work in the evenings as well. And I I will share with you too that. We are pushing up against some, you know, staffing challenges when we've got multiple night meetings a week for folks. But we work at the the pleasure of the board and my recommendation, just given. The weightiness of any kind of cultural change like this, be that it. Be a potential topic for future discussion. Although I guess we've heard one very definitive kind of response at this point.
You're about to hear another one. I have a full-time job, which ends at five. Or later, depending on who, what, which, which country I'm working with at any given moment. So the six o'clock is already a. I have to set it aside. I can't, I can't cut into my workday.
Lisa?
Same, I might be able to go as early as five thirty, but I wouldn't be able to make four and five thirty might be. Pushing it. That said, I'll just add one other thing kind of off of what ML mentioned, and I know I've requested this before. I'm looking at the first page of our planning board meeting agenda. And there are no estimates. There are no time estimates for how long we imagine different items will take and. Please, please, can we have those? I know that we're going to blow past them a lot. But it would be really, really helpful to like, for ourselves to hold ourselves accountable and also to have a sense of like kind of how staff thinks it's going to unfold. And for staff and other folks to, you know, even estimate how long it's going, and I think it might help us understand if something's going to run over. So just a plea to add estimates of about how long we hope or anticipate items will take. I think that would be helpful. And I I don't think I'm missing it. I like looked three times. I was like, am I just losing it? I don't think it's there.
We can definitely do that. If you suggest, Lisa.
Okay, any?
I was just gonna say, we don't, you didn't miss it, and I'm not sure what discussions have been had, and I don't think it's ever been anything that we've done in the past, but. I'll talk with Brad and Charles and other staff about how we can do that.
I I think it's useful too, I know, and I I am sometimes the person getting brought back in line. But but it kind of allows us to point to something and say, okay, guys, you know, we're having a long discussion, but remember that we were trying to spend thirty minutes on this. We're already five minutes over, like. Let's move along without, I think, it feeling so much like it's one person. It's more like, oh, the agenda, you know, is indicating this. And again, there'll be times we choose to blow past it, and that's fine, but I think it would help.
Can I call a qui on that and say, one option is rather than trying to time it. Which can be difficult when we have call-ups and we have no idea if somebody's going to have questions on a call-up. For the items that we do know, for example, this staff presentation is a twenty-minute presentation.
That's what I meant. I meant, I meant like, I think it's going to take five minutes, not that it's going to start at six oh five PM.
Gotcha. Yeah, so like, I meant like, this should take about two minutes or. One hour, you know, or thirty-minute staff presentation, thirty-minute discussion, and just like offer some estimates.
Yep, that's what I meant. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, awesome.
Mark?
I was just gonna say, the Transportation Advisory Board, the the Chair and Vice Chair, along with staff. In our agenda meetings, we just laid out the schedule just to our best abilities and and we we knew many times. We were going to miss the mark like Lisa says. Conversely, it did. You know, if someone said, oh, I think that's going to take twenty minutes, like, no way, it's parking, we're going to take an hour on this. So anyway. I would encourage it as well and time estimates, and it does help the Chair kind of hold the meeting to some sort of schedule.
Okay, we'll give it a trot in the next agenda meeting, so. All right. Any other thoughts? Any other matters? Okay, shall we bring this to a close tonight? Good. Let's declare this adjourned here. Good night.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.